6:05, I'd like to call this meeting to order for April 23rd, 2019. Order selectmen and have a acceptance of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Curran, second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. At this moment, are there any walk-ins? Yes.
Can I approach? I have gifts for you guys in honor of our birthday. Sorry, Jim, I will bring yours next time.
Thank you.
There's no vodka in this.
Oh.
But, um, I'll be more about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh. Thank you.
Just bring us water bottles.
That's really cool.
All right, to open it? Thank you.
Thanks.
That's very nice.
Is it a recyclable straw?
Of course. BPA free.
I saw that.
I got the bedazzled one.
Of course you did. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
So we should keep these here at the, um, our office? How's that?
Keep them with you.
They're here.
Yep.
In honor of our earth. So I'm Freya Schlegel, 9 West Gate Lane, and I just wanted to talk to you guys about the dump and all the plastic that's going into the trash.
And the trash as in they recycle as opposed to...
Yes, all of the loose plastic that's wrapped around everything. Like, I've heard that it's getting better as far as manufacturing is concerned. They're using less plastic. Like, they're starting to try to phase stuff out. But right now at the dump, if you bring plastics to the dump, you have to throw it in with your trash.
The trash.
And that takes longer for everything to biodegrade.
Yeah, that's a good question. Because at one time, that used to just go directly into a bin, is what I remember.
Yes, they used to have to the left there, a big bin of non-recyclables.
Right. And Kevin, are you, do you have any answers or suggestions as to...
I've got plenty of answers and open for suggestions. What is the area concerned about, the plastic?
It's just all the, the plastic wrapping and the plastic bags. John, do you have that text that I sent you? I left my phone at home.
Yeah. So what it is, in essence, is there was, Kevin, at one point in time, next to the glass, uh, the recyclable for the deposits, there used to be a bin there. It used to be the original glass bin, I think. And then we were putting a whole bunch of plastic directly into that. Is there some way that we're able to continue to keep that separate than putting it into our trash bags? Because I think right now, it's, I think we're being told, plastic is to go into the trash bags, which creates more difficulty to, goes into landfill or wherever they're dumping it.
The problem is, we're not getting the recycling. It's not being accepted in the recycling as the plastic of that, um, with our suppliers. So I thought originally you were talking about the plastic bags, or you thought about the plastic...
Yeah, um, the plastic bags, the plastic wrapping that comes around, like, everything in biodegradable store.
I think that's not recyclable, right?
So... If there is a company who will take it.
Do you know of the company?
I sent you the text.
The text, okay. What I'll do then is, I'll forward that on to...
My phone's charging in the kitchen.
I'll, I'll send that on to Kevin then to take a look. Because could we take a look to see how, because it makes sense if you're having plastic that is, um, in with your trash that's biodegradable, it creates more of a problem.
We've looked into that in the past, and what there actually is, they take styrofoam on the plastic and they create a, like a ball that's somewhat recyclable. The problem is, is we don't have the quantities for them to come in, the company that we were dealing with. Um, if you have another company that can do it cheaper, we'd love to take a look at it. Um, it wasn't cost prohibitive when we looked at it before. The reason we separate the bags is because they get caught in the bails and causes a lot of problems. And they actually downgrade, uh, the recycling grade that's put on our recyclables, which means we get less money for it. Um, and the recycling market's been horrible, as I know Sean brought up a couple times, uh, talking about the transfer station. But yeah, glad that you have something. Uh, we'd love you to, we'd love to learn about it. Um, you know, we're, we're also involved in the Social Recycling Coalition, uh, you know, group. So if it works out, we could set it up so the company brings in and comes in and presents the whole South Shore.
Awesome.
We'll gladly do that. Uh, I was the former chair of that, so we're, we're all for it.
Cool.
Uh, when we looked at it before, there wasn't cost prohibitive, we couldn't supply enough for them to come in and bring it in.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, it's E.L. Harvey.
They're out of Westboro.
Yeah, but I, I think there was issues. I, we did reach out with them at one time when we looked at some of the recycling, but it's the cost of shipping the stuff and the material and to bring them in. It's a, there's a machine that creates, uh, it shrinks all the styrofoam and everything that makes it. Maybe they can recycle it.
So gross. So gross.
We looked at, we looked at it sort of about two years ago.
Okay, I do have, um, a contact that I can reach out to and get into the details.
You can stop in DQW and give me the information.
Excellent.
We'll go over what it was. Glad to look.
That'd be great.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Any other, um, walk-ins? All right. Um, seeing that, then Jim, I'll turn it over to you for the town report.
Couple things real quick. Uh, this Saturday is Ship Shape Day, 27th. Supplies available at the town hall between 8:00 and 10:00, so this is a great event. And you leave the bags out by the side of the road, and the highway department will pick them up. But it's a great event for cleaning up the town, beautifying it, so I hope people get out, and we have a nice day. Tomorrow night, 6:30 at the library is our meeting on North Situate. Brad Washburn, uh, Planning and Community Development Director, is going to be leading that meeting.
Where?
It's going to be at the library. So we're going to have a wide-ranging discussions on, on North Situate, maybe some things we can do in North Situate, also, uh, to update people on where we are in the regional sewer on that issue. Uh, Cohasset's town meeting is next Monday. After that, they will be discussing and hopefully voting to go forward with what we call this, what I call the smaller plan.
Oh, good.
Uh, down South Main Street, connecting our places in North Situate to South Main Street into Cohasset. Uh, they still want to do some study on what the impacts and what type of development they would get if they soared Route 3A. Uh, and obviously, we don't want to wait. Uh, we want to get going. So, uh, hopefully they'll do that, and then we'll be on that path to get started on that. We've already contacted the engineers, said, "Let's start taking a look at this and, and make sure it's feasible." But, um, you know, the original plan was for South Main Street to come up into North Situate, then go loop around 3A. So there shouldn't be an issue sending it the other way, and then if we go with the larger plan later, rerouting at least part of that sewerage that way. So hopefully, within two weeks, they'll make a decision, and we'll be able to, to get started on that.
Good.
So, um, ice pigging is underway. You've seen the signs. Uh, this week, we've been on Country Way, doing that main. Uh, most of the dead ends on there all have dead-end water mains. I know we talked about this. And none of them had a hydrant or a flushing gate at the end of the cul-de-sac. So the last, anywhere from 400 to 500 feet of the road, there was no way for us to flush the end of that pipe. Uh, I sent you, um, Oakhurst, when we put in the flushing gate, what that looked like. So we flushed all those yesterday and today. We think we got some really good results from that. Uh, the, the water came out, the pig came out really kind of nasty, but after that, the water looked really good. We will be doing a Survey Monkey to residents in those areas, asking if they're seeing an improvement in their water quality. Tomorrow, we're going to be on Old Oak and Bucket. Uh, we think that's going to be another really productive pigging. Um, as you know, Old Oak and Bucket took well 17A for years, which is very high in manganese. So we think that, uh, that pipe's going to be pretty, uh, pretty contaminated, for lack of a better word. And we'll get some good cleaning results on that. Then we'll be down Driftway, Kent Street, and heading into, uh, Situate Harbor.
That's a good question.
Sure.
How are you sending the survey to those residents?
Uh, we said email blast, Kevin?
We have. Everyone's emailed?
I asked about a survey. I know that a lot of it, but I'm just working on it.
Okay.
So we'll find a way to, to target them.
And I, it might have, might be trying to send it to the whole town, which is a fair reason, because it's hard to pin those areas down. They were even thinking going over the cards, individually self-stamped cards, and having people fill them out and send them back, so that we could get an idea if they did notice any improvements.
Okay.
We noticed, we, we have had a lot of complaints in some of those streets, so we've been, like, even just putting the flushing items in, it was a huge improvement.
Anybody else? No?
So, I mean, I, I think we talked about it last time. We also found a couple of, uh, one, one street at the end of the main, there was a one-inch service coming off, which would go to your house, and then there were three houses connected to the one-inch service. Um, I don't know how those people all took showers at the same time, but we've corrected that. So we've corrected a lot of other things that the water department's found on there. Uh, they put a lot of work into it, so hopefully we're going to get the results that we're expecting out of that. But it looked really good today when we were out there, and yesterday, so, so far, so good. Uh, finally, uh, just so the board knows, game seven is tonight, so, uh, the faster we can get through this meeting, the happier I'll be. I will be streaming it live over here if anybody wants to, wants to know what's going on. Just don't ask me any questions, because I'm not going to be paying much attention.
Appreciate your honesty.
Just wanted to be honest.
Anybody else? Any questions? If anyone wants to know what the score right now is, Jim?
Hasn't started yet.
Okay, there you go. Um, all right, thank you. Then let's get started on our 6:15 review discussion. Uh, Community Campus Senior Center Recreation Department presentation. We have Nancy Holden, Finance Director here. Nancy and Town, I guess, Finance Director and Town Accountant. Is that typically, is that the exact, just Finance Director is what I like to call it?
Call me whatever you want. I'll answer to it.
The best finance director in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. How's that?
Well, let's put this way, anyone watching at home just turned on the Bruins game or anything else other than to watch this.
Oh, I'm sure there's a kid who turned on to watch this. Pretty confident there are. Yeah, Ruth, would you mind if we could ask you to hit those light switches? Thank you. Seth, can you get those on TV?
Uh, yes.
Seth, thank you for blessing, uh, your presence here with us. It's like a long time. We haven't seen you here.
Always love seeing you guys.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to have a little bit of a debt recap with the board, especially so that we can have a discussion about the senior center financing and our options for that.
Yep.
So the objectives of this meeting are a summary of the current debt position, projects on the horizon, and how they will be and could be accommodated, and then financing for the community campus, for senior center and recreational facilities, options and impacts. And as always, I will try to talk as fast as possible. So our current issue long-term debt for all funds is just over $102 million. And this is where it breaks down to. Most of it is in the debt exclusions. And then the next largest would be the water department. Again, for those of you who don't like graphs, we went for a table and a pie chart, just to have a better feel for how it looks like and how it breaks apart. The general fund debt, that, which is covered by the tax levy, whether it be, um, by a debt exclusion or within the levy, is the vast majority of that, about 74 million. And these are just the categories of where the debt is parceled out, for what purposes. And again, sometimes it's easier to see it in a pie chart format. So the bulk of it is in, um, the buildings, town buildings and school buildings, because those are the major projects. But you can also see about, uh, 6% to four shore and about, um, 2% to roads. Most of the road authorizations we've done the last few years have been, uh, cash authorizations. What's still out there? Um, we have pieces of the three debt exclusions still out there. We will not need to issue any additional debt for the middle school. We may not need to issue any additional debt for the library or the public safety complex. Public building is closing those projects out now, as is the school building committee. Uh, town meeting, special town meeting voted to pay down the facilities design and the integrated financial software, so those will fall off. Um, we also have, um, the four-shore protection for 2 million, which has not been allocated to any project, so it just sits out there as a available authorization. The septic loan program, which was approved, would be paid off with betterments. Um, we haven't done any drawdowns on that yet. And then we have the FEMA four-shore design, the 4 million that was authorized back in November for those projects, and we'll touch on those. The four-shore protection and athletic field renovation that we just did at the annual town meeting. So again, just a more graphical, uh, look at how our debt is going to retire. By 2023, a third of the outstanding, um, within the levy, general fund debt will be retired. By 2025, over half of it. Um, and on so on and so forth. And that is for either paying cash as you go or for rapid amortization. So rather than borrow something for 20 years, we borrow it for 10 years and try to pay it down faster. Again, this shows our actual debt service budget, and I know Tony's very familiar with this. We're around, we try to keep around the 1.5 to 1.6 million dollars for your general fund budget.
Bless you.
Um, so this is our within the levy, within Proposition 2.5, general fund debt. And as you can see, we have retirement, so we have some, um, places in that chart. And this is what I like to refer to as the opportunity chart. This is, uh, retiring debt. So you can see around 2024, 2025, there's some opportunities. 2026 to 2027, there's large chunks of debt retiring. Usually these coincide with bonds that are maturing. So if you were going to be looking at projects within the levy that you wanted to, uh, finance, you'd want to look at those years for potentially being places where that financing could happen, if you could push them out a little bit. Uh, the major enterprise capital projects that are out there, the water treatment plant upgrades, those are going to be supported by water rates. Um, it would qualify for Clean Water Trust loan. We would have to apply for it and see if it was accepted. The dollar value of that project is going to depend. We don't know. The engineering hasn't been done. The water study hasn't been done. So whether it would be a joining facility for DMC, subsequent upgrades to the existing facility or a new facility, that's yet to be determined. So the actual cost is going to vary, but it's out there on the horizon. Well, 17A, uh, the green sand filter facility was approved at annual town meeting. That has already been accepted for a low-interest loan by the Clean Water Trust and will be financed that way, as was the water treatment plan improvements for 4 million, design and engineering. Again, none of that is going, the 4 million is not going to be incurred until the water study is concluded and the board decides how it wants to move forward with that project.
Nancy, quick question on that?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry if I interrupted. The, um, the water, um, trust loans, how, uh, how long are those typically?
Clean Water Trust, you can usually, um, choose from 20 to 30 years.
Uh-huh.
But you have to be accepted. So the first two phases of the $22 million water pipe project were not accepted into the program.
Okay. But the 8 million has been accepted?
It has been accepted.
And now we can determine the line?
We had an application for the Hummer Rock water mains, and that was rejected. So they choose how they want to structure their, their bond, and then they accept or not accept, and then you can reapply the next year. But the application, it's not like a two-page thing. It's literally an inch thick. So it's something that you have to have engineers do for you.
Good question.
So there is a cost factor to that.
Thank you.
Um, the identified major capital projects that exist that are funded by the tax levy would be athletic fields. Um, it's a $10 million project, as everyone knows from a few weeks ago. 8.3 million supported by CPA revenues, and then the 1.6 million by the general fund tax levy. As the town administrator has already mentioned, um, we're planning to do some free cash pay down of that in the coming years, so I don't expect that we would issue a full 1.6 million. Hopefully, we won't issue anything, but if we do, it'll be reduced from that. The bigger item we haven't talked about that much, um, we've alluded to it when we talk about the FEMA storms, are the subsidized four-shore storm damage repairs from the last four storms. As you can see from the dates, this, these repairs go back seven years. None of this work has been done. Most of it because we've been caught up getting hit with another storm before we can get mobilized. And the other issue is that the red tape involved. FEMA will pay you to reimburse you for 75% of your costs to repair the damage. So if stone 1, 4, and 6 move, you can put 1, 4, and 6 back. But when you're talking about a revetment or a seawall, that doesn't work. You can't hire a contractor to move three stones. It's a bigger project. So what we've been talking about with the board and the town administrator and, um, MEMA is potentially consolidating some of those projects into bigger projects across the storms, and that discussion is moving forward. Um, and we will continue to update the board as it moves forward.
Nancy, do we have to resubmit, um, for a percentage for reimbursement for FEMA, if you're going to bundle them, if you will?
No, but they would have to decide to which disaster they're going to assign it.
Mm-hmm.
So they can choose that they, um, and we think what they might do is say, "Okay, we'll take Sandy, Nemo, and Juneau, so Third Cliff, losing all four disasters, and we'll just call it one project under Riley." So we haven't formalized our Riley damages for the four-shore yet. Um, they're estimated approximately 8 million. We're, we were potentially going to have a meeting tomorrow, probably have a meeting next week to finally sign off on the site assessments. Uh, the town's general fund share, that would be 4.9 million. We have confirmed with MEMA that the Commonwealth Seawall and Dam Repair Fund, which helped pay for the Oceanside Drive seawall, um, seawall program, we could use that towards our town share. So if we could get a grant through that program, that helps us meet our 25% or a low-interest 2% loan. Um, they also said coastal zone management grants and potentially municipal vulnerability grants can be used to help fund the town share. MEMA is very motivated to, uh, work with FEMA and to resolve Situate's issues. Uh, we've become, uh, very popular, in a good sense, that they're very, a lot of people are motivated, including the governor, to resolve our, um, outstanding FEMA claims and get them moving so that we can make those repairs.
Let me, let me just ask you right now, then, with just the storms Sandy, Nemo, Juneau, Riley, how much are we talking about? The town is, um, could see for 25%.
4.9 million would be our 25%.
Okay, for all those storms?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right now, that's at 19.7 million is the estimated damages, keeping in mind that 2000, Sandy, Nemo, and Juneau are all at the, the value at that time.
Now, the reason I'm asking, Nancy, is because in the capital plan, there are three different years, I thought, maybe it's two, 2021, 2022, where we're looking at potentially seawall repair replacement for 8, 10, and 12 million dollars. And that's separate apart from the 4.9, correct?
Potentially, yes. Was, we have the Turner Road, which would be an Army Corps of Engineers, which is on the capital plan, but the Army Corps of Engineers is still doing the feasibility study for that area. If we qualify for their, uh, small construction grant, that would be a 65-35 match. Same thing, it's a federal program. We could probably use state grants to help us meet our share.
Okay.
So we don't have to do anything. Um, the only thing that we are going to have to decide as we get closer to coming to a final decision on whether to consolidate these projects with FEMA is, we've been using time extensions, and currently, our time extensions now run out on 2021. And FEMA is beginning to say, "If you're not going to do the repairs, we're just going to cancel the projects." Because obviously, you don't need the reimbursement, because you're not going to do it, which you can see their point. Um, it doesn't help us in trying to decide what we do and how we finance it. But that's a discussion for another day, and we'll bring it back before you, but it is out there. Um, we've identified them. We just want to make sure that the board is aware of it. Um, the new elementary school or renovations?
Nancy, is any of that money, um, expense reimbursement for the FEMA money? Does any of it have to do with firefighter stuff, or is it all just repair to rocks? Is there any?
This is all repair to rock.
So there's no...
We already got...
Expense, we've already got all that back yet?
Everything but Riley. The Riley claims or the, the million dollars that we spent are still ongoing. I can tell you that, because I've had nine emails from FEMA today, and I'm not exaggerating. Um, and those are moving, we've gotten one that's gone all the way to, um, CRC, which is the Claims Something Center. It's FEMA, it's all acronym. Um, and the others are moving along. They're all in there, they're just reviewing them, and then they'll move them off to either Texas or California, and then we'll begin to see reimbursements. I don't expect to see any reimbursements in this fiscal year. I would be surprised if we got anything this calendar year, but everything now is electronic with them. They go through a portal, so they say it will work faster. We hope so.
And that all will go to the stabilization fund?
It will close out to free cash, and town meeting can vote to put it in any stabilization fund, however you want to handle it.
That's where it came from, right?
Um, well, we already replenished it.
Oh, that's right.
Right. But you can choose to put it and add more to it, or put it in one of the other stabilization funds.
Okay.
Um, the new elementary school or renovations to existing schools, um, the superintendent was before you to talk about the statement of interest for Cushing and Hathaway. That's been filed. Looking at what we were previously estimated to, uh, what we previously received for MSBA funding, it was 44% for the Gates Middle School. This project would definitely have to be a debt exclusion. Just because the statements of interest are filed, it's not guaranteed, um, that we would be in the next review cycle. If you may remember, with Superintendent Hickey from the South Shore Bo-Tech was before you for his budget, and he mentioned that they had been trying for five years to get in the MSB, MSBA cycle, and they, every year, they put in their statement of interest and they wait. It depends, it's needs, needs based on facility condition. So even though we say our facilities need immediate attention, if you're going up against a 100-year-old school in South Boston, their, their need may be greater than yours, and you may get bumped. So I don't know when we will be accepted in the program, um, but it's not a, a guarantee that it's going to be immediate. And even once we're accepted, we would still have to do a feasibility study, um, to look at what the options are and what the needs are. Realistically, the process is going to take five to seven years. So this is out there, but it's farther out on the horizon.
So you're throwing it, like, in seven years out or 10 years out?
I don't even know if I put it on the five-year capital plan, because I don't know if it's that close. I probably would make some mention of it, um, just so you're aware, but I don't even know in five years if you would be approving this. I would hope we would have some type of movement on it by then, but you don't, you don't know. Um, the Gates feasibility study was in November of '12. The project was voted in '14, and the school opened in '17. And there was plenty of work that was done before that feasibility study. But it, just to give you a, a frame of reference, I know people are concerned about the schools. But again, when you hit state government and federal government, the speed at which they operate is slightly less than what you'd like to see sometimes. So our general fund, non-debt exclusion debt service budget, we talked about where we were. The blue would be the, uh, the reddish, depending on how good your graphics card is, is the current general fund debt service that's outstanding. This is non-debt exclusion. The pale blue is the other projects we spoke about at that chart before. 500,000 for the FEMA design. We have contracts outstanding already on that. I'm assuming 50% of the fields, could be assuming high, could be assuming low, and all 300,000 of the four-shore that was just approved. You can see how that starts to level out that line. And then the green line would be, um, if we were to bring on $4 million worth of FEMA repairs for four-shore. The way it's structured for this graph, it's 2 million and 2 million, because you wouldn't, you likely would not award one contract to do the work all at once. you likely would not award one contract to do the work all at once. It would likely be over a period of years, smaller contracts. But just so you have a sense of what it would do if you were to bring on that debt. If you were to do that, it is going to limit your ability to approve other projects for debt within the levy limit without raising that budget above the 1.6 to 1.65 area. Which we have been doing the last several years. We've tried to avoid recommending items with debt as much as possible. As the town administrator did mention to you, the capital plan would have been larger this year if we'd not put the million dollars back in the stabilization fund for the storm costs. So, keeping it on a pay-as-you-go as much as possible gives you the opportunity, if something larger comes along. And as you can see, that's beginning to hit, the bigger hit is in 26-27, that year when we previously said that there was a major retirement of a bond. And again, this is just projections. None of this is written in stone. None of this has been approved. It's just potentials. So, our existing debt exclusions, what's more of what our discussion is about tonight. These are the debt exclusions that are currently approved, when they retire, the principal outstanding, and also the principal and interest. So, as you can see at the bottom of the pile, is the sewer upgrade. There's a major retirement that occurred in the current year that we're in. And then the balance of it will retire in fiscal '21. And by retirement, I mean it'll be paid off. The next one will be Jenkins, the Jenkins School and the High School renovations, which will be in 2025. And then after that, you have Wampatuck. Wampatuck, as you can see, is quite small, so you really don't see a great pickup when you, that retirement occurs. This is what our current, on average home, which is $576,038 this year, the additional amount that's being added to your tax bill. And this is not including any offsets from the solar or wind turbine for the public safety and middle school projects. And that's about $37 a year. Those aren't, we didn't guarantee those through the end of the project, so I don't include them when I do this type of valuation. Just for those that are at home, the large purple is middle school. The red is the public safety complex. The green is the library. The black is Wampatuck School. The blue above that is Jenkins High School. And then the orange is sewer upgrade. And as you can see, we have the retirements office we spoke about. Again, we have this opportunity chart to see when there's going to be major retirements in the debt exclusions. As I mentioned, fiscal '20 has a significant opportunity that we're going to talk about. And then again, in fiscal '26, which is the year after Jenkins and the High School retires. So, we do need to talk a little bit more about the impact of the major school project. We've touched on most of this. The only thing I didn't touch on was, if such a project were to come forward, the types of things we might talk about would be, how long would we finance it for? We financed the middle school for 25 years. You might look at that similarly for this type of expense. And in today's dollars, it would be about $9,300 over a 25-year period of an impact of an $85 million project with a 44% reimbursement. Like I said, that could be any number at any time, because we're not accepted into the program. We haven't had a feasibility study. We don't have a final project. But it's out there, so we should touch on it, discuss it, and at least know about what that impact could be in the future. So, what we all want to talk about, financing at the community campus for the senior center and recreational facilities. The project cost, this board has already voted, is $12,232,450. There is the potential for offsetting revenue. We have nothing that's been confirmed yet, so I'm assuming full freight to the taxpayer for the entire project. But potential offsetting revenues include private donations. The library's gotten over a million dollars in private donations. I don't expect the same level, but I'm assuming that there are people that would like to make donations if the project were to move forward. We still have the $2 million in the bond bill. If that ever moves forward, we might see something.
Sale of the old building? Sale of the old building?
Disposition of real estate. Yep, we have that or any other property. Transfers of unused proceeds from other projects. I think John is still recovering from reading the capital budget motion at town meetings, so that does happen and could happen again.
Not for me, it's not.
We can always just make you be the person who wants to read it.
Invite you back.
There are also possible grant opportunities. The municipal ADA improvement grant, we've gotten that for the last two years. Once for the Town Marina Project for the gangway. And this year for the ADA Transition Plan, which is on your agenda in about four hours, I'm sorry to say. The maximum award on this would be $250,000. So, we are making ADA, potentially making ADA improvements to the gym. So, this would, could be a good match for that. The Community Development Block Grant, we've talked about this before, and Jim has mentioned that we are not a competitive town for that grant, because our HUD score, which is the HUD Low to Moderate Income Score, is low. It's 22.9. I gave the board in their packet a listing of communities who were awarded this grant in fiscal '18. And next to it, I put their score. There was no one with a score that low who got a grant. It doesn't mean we couldn't get the grant. We certainly should be looking at this grant. Marshfield did build their senior center with one of these grants back in 2001. I did highlight for you that there were some elder services and senior, and recreational items mentioned to other people who were awarded. It all depends on who applies that year, whether we're competitive or not competitive. The next round will be March of 2020. So, that would be the next time that we could apply for this grant. We can see if there's anything off-cycle, but I don't think there really is. And I also put on the presentation just the types of facilities that are covered. And as you see, this project fits well into the type. It would only be the fact that the economics of the town that might make it possibly not a good fit. The maximum award on that type of grant is between $800 and $825,000. So, I did find another private grant. We're not in their priority area, but they have made awards to Massachusetts groups before. It's a three-page letter of interest that we could file. Doesn't hurt to file a letter of interest and see what happens. I know Linda's been looking for other grants. I have also been looking for other grants to see if there's anything we can do from the veterans component, or any other component. So, certainly not without attempts. But these are two main grants that I think were well worth pursuing.
Nancy, what's the three-page one that you found?
It's the Henry Weintraub Foundation. And they do fund capital costs for senior centers. But it's basically in Baltimore, New York City, San Francisco, Israel, and one other place. But recent projects, there have been two projects that they've done for housing in Boston. So, I mean, it's a Hail Mary, yeah. But at this point, if the project were to move forward, I can write a three-page letter. Make it very compelling. So, this project would definitely have to be a debt exclusion. We couldn't afford to do this project within the debt, within the levy limit. The annual, what a debt exclusion is for people who aren't familiar with or are new to town since the last time this came around, is the annual repayment of the principal and interest on the debt would be added to the real estate tax bill in addition to the amount we were allowed to levy under Proposition 2.5. The estimated impact of the project over 20 years is $2,230. For our discussion tonight, I've assumed a 20-year bond, you could go longer to 25. You're just going to incur more interest for the, what you might gain on lowering down that cost, but you can look at it. Different options that would be available to finance the project that could affect how much the taxpayer would be impacted. The total amount would not change, just how it would come onto someone's property taxes. So, we, before, we talked about that opportunity chart with the debt exclusions and having a retirement, a major retirement. So, normally, we would issue the debt at the end of the project. There is a possibility, if the board were so inclined, to break it into two pieces. Issue six, if the project were to move forward and be approved, issue the debt $6 million basically immediately, sometime in this calendar year before the tax rate was set in December, and then issue the balance at the end. The reason you would do that is for smoothing, and I'll show you what I mean. So, this is our debt exclusions for the next approximately 10 years. Debt exclusions go out to 2041, but if I put that on a chart, it becomes completely illegible, so I didn't do that. So, you can see in fiscal '19, which is the second column, that was $811. So, that was how much people are paying this year on their tax bill. Next year, because of that retirement, it's going to go down to $737, then to $713. If this project were to come forward, I would expect to see that hitting the tax bill around 2022, and you'd see that jump from $713 to $825. So, the first-year impact for the project, it's about $140, $144. Because of what's retiring, you'd probably feel it as about $112 on your tax bill, just the delta, because some stuff's going to fall off as this comes on. So, that would be what you would expect. If you wanted to do this other option and split it into two pieces, the pale blue would be the first piece issuing in 2020. And the pale, I don't even know what color that is, salmon, it's pink on my screen, would be the second piece of 6.2 million. And I'm assuming that there are no offsetting revenues to this, issuing for the first payment in 2022. As you can see from the dollar numbers above, that smooths it out. So, you don't have these, it going down and then popping back up. It doesn't change the total amount that someone's going to pay. We might benefit from some lower interest costs if the rates start to climb back up by the time the last half of it gets issued. But I'm, I cannot predict interest costs at this point. We never thought that interest rates would stay this low this long. So, it is something for the board to consider. I'd like the board to give me a little direction for the other public documents, which way I should consider when I present those out. I do have both versions. To me, as much as I don't want to borrow money upfront, we'd have to, we'd have to make sure we could spend it, which we can, because if the project were to move forward, they were talking about awarding a contract in July, going up to bid in June, awarding in July, or close to it. So, you'd have shovels in the ground potentially in the fall. So, I don't find it a problem that we could spend the first $6 million if that was the case. So, it's an option to smooth it out.
No.
So, what does this look like chart-wise? If we were just to do a single issue, if the project were to be approved, and we did a single issue with a coming-on-board in 2022, the first red column shows the impact. So, approximately $145, it's 144-something. If you were to split it into two different bond issues, as we just discussed, the second red column shows how it would kind of ease in. You'd only be paying half of it for the first two years. The third year, you'd have the full impact, and then it would start to decline again. And then at the other end of it, you have the same thing. The last two years would be quite a bit reduced from the middle part. So, again, bottom line, you're still going to pay what you're going to pay for the project, which is approximately $2,230 overall. But it would just change how it came onto the bills, smooth it out overall. Could be easier for some people, might not be easier for other people who would rather not have it, have that break in between. So, it is something to consider. So, in summary, I know I'm making Tony happy because I said the word "summary." The community camp, the Center for Senior Center Recreation Facilities, was going to cost the average taxpayer, average homeowner of a home assessed that, with an assessed value of $576,038, and estimated $2,230 over 20 years. Due to the retiring debt exclusions in fiscal '19, '21, and '25, there is the ability to put the project in over two phases that would not increase it beyond our current level of debt for the debt exclusion, the current impact. And the other approved projects, we're aware of them, we've accounted for them, we know what their impact would be. So, it's not as if this is a one-off and we're not looking at the others. We're aware of the others and how they would impact, and when they would impact. Again, as we talked about, we have that opportunity chart to see where we want to slide some of those things, and the larger projects that we know that are out there. So, just to go back to that slide, I just want to show you, in 2018, the additional was the first column of dollar values with $831. You're not going to go back above that in either way of financing it.
That's $576,000, what was it? $38, thank you.
You made me question myself there for a minute, I had to go and look.
All right. Ruth, could I ask you to turn those lights back on? Thank you.
I do apologize for going so quickly.
No, that's all right.
I have a question, and I don't know if you can answer this. But, you know, in looking at keeping 2020 and 2021, I think of the water rates and, you know, the increases there that residents are potentially going to see based on the water upgrades that are happening. So, do you have any numbers, you know, I know it's up to our vote, but do you have any sort of thoughts, projections on what those look like per household? I know it's based on usage, but...
Yeah, I don't have like a dollar value. I have the percentage that I think the rates are going to go up. So, for the green sand filter, I'm thinking along the lines of a 17% rate increase to accommodate that. And that depends on when we actually get that debt bill. The difference with Clean Water Trust as compared to how we normally finance is we choose when we go to market. The Clean Water Trust will tell you, here's your debt, now it's time to pay. They will wait until we start the project, so they won't borrow in anticipation beyond that. So, that could be a couple of years out. The only thing that we're going to have to look at for our rate discussion for fiscal '20 is the 1.2 million that we did at the November special town meeting for the emergency repairs. And potentially, the $4 million if that moves forward with some type of a contract that we're going to have to borrow for. The $8 million, I don't think we need to reflect it in fiscal '20s rates at this time, unless that project just starts taking off and starts moving. I don't think we can do that within a year. The $4 million itself, we're looking at probably an 11.5% if you were to spend the full amount. And I know the board, that all depends on what the board decides to move forward with after the water study. So, again, there's some time before that's going to happen, so we might not even incorporate it into the '20 rates if we know we're not going to have the results of the water study that quickly, because they haven't even awarded the contract for that yet. And then...
How long are those increases for? How long are the increases for?
They would be going forward, and then you could look at once that debt retires.
20 years, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I would think at least 20 years. There's a difference on the $4 million. If you could get a Clean Water Trust financing for that, and I'm assuming full $4 million, it might not, it might not be. The difference in a rate increase is between an 8.5 to an 11.5, if we'd have to go out to market at a 4.5. So, being able to participate in the Clean Water Trust, even though we lose flexibility as to when, we gain relief in interest rates. So, I don't think that the $8 million and the $4 million, we can, we'll have that discussion when we have the rate discussion for water rates. I don't know if you want to reflect it this early in the '20 rates or not. I would think you might want to just reflect the 1.2 million, anything else that we have that's going on with the other smaller projects that they have, and then look at that to, on a, maybe 2021, definitely 2021 going forward, and see if we can't parse that out.
That doesn't include the $40 million for a new plant, right?
Doesn't, no, until we know what we are actually going to have to do for that.
So, that's four times that size? Because one's eight and one's four, right?
Can you remind me what the average water bill is right now? I can't remember. Do we know?
I can't remember either, I'm sorry.
Who's Kevin, he knows, right?
I have this average sewer water bill for our discussion later in this meeting. I don't have the average water bill, but I can find it while this meeting is going on.
John? Any more good news?
Grants, grants, grants. We're very good grant writers, as it was evidenced by last year's $5 million worth of grants.
My head's spinning.
We have some excellent grant writers in town, and we have some opportunities. And even for the Fields Project, there are park grants that we definitely should go after for that one. So, I think we have Brad, we have Linda, who's an excellent grant writer, and Brad for some of the bigger ones, and put them together for that project, because it's a mix of recreational and elder services. So, it's multi-generational, and it ticks quite a few boxes and makes it more attractive. At this point, you know, we apply for everything that we can possibly apply for, and we do really well.
Yeah.
I think our track record shows that. But as you, as you already mentioned, you do have some assets you could, that you could sell.
Tony, anymore?
Well, the only question I have, I mean, you're saying there's two options to finance it. One of them is basically prepaying, you know, borrowing it a little earlier than you have to. Are you recommending one of the two?
For smoothing, I would recommend doing it in two issues, especially where we know that there isn't any further design. It's basically shovel in the ground, and you're going directly out to bid. So, you could spend down that first $6 million, and then you wouldn't issue the latter half. I don't think we would get more than $6 million in any type of offsetting revenue. So, I think you'd be safe with that.
But the smoothing is, what, $2, $3, $4, $5? It's not dramatic.
No, it is when you look at, we're at the first numeric column. So, you're going from $811 to 2021 to $713. And then you're going to hop back up that $145 to 8, you know, to 825.
Oh, no, I understand it. But when you're paying it, you know, the difference is 825 to 821. You know, you'd actually give people a break for two years.
And that's, that's the thing. Would you rather have that two years of break? Or would you rather have it so your escrow's not kind of doing this thing?
Yeah.
If you have an escrow account. It's kind of six in one, half dozen of the other, and that's why I wanted the board to think about it and decide how they want to move forward with, you know, the public impact documents. I can do it both ways, because you don't have to make a decision. It's just helpful if you have a sense of what you think might be easier for a taxpayer. You know, I mean, you're all taxpayers, you're all going to be paying this. Would you rather see it smoothed out? Or would you rather have a break for a couple of years and then have it come back onboard?
My two cents on it is I think that smoothing make, it'd be sticker shock. I mean, yes, it'd be nice to have more money in your pocket the next couple of years, but I think generally speaking, you get used to paying a certain amount, and it's, as you say, it's built into your escrow if you have a mortgage, and it's not a huge sticker shock when it's just a nominal change every year. I think if it goes up $120 in a year, then even though if you know it's coming, it's still there. So, I prefer, I think that the split makes more sense for comfort of taxpayers.
John?
Well, I would agree. People get used to spending a certain amount and live within their means, and so, rather than have it going up and down, save, the smoother you can make it, the better.
So, are you looking for a decision tonight from the board in preparation for the town meeting?
It's not on your agenda to vote, but I have prepared impact documents, like we did for the public safety complex, what we did for the middle school, the library, that we can, that we can make available to people, so they can get a sense for how this impacts them, not just at the average, but I have like the regular chart that says, okay, if I'm, my house is about a million, this is going to impact me. I just need to know, it'll change.
So, I have, I'm hearing you two say, think one way, and you two think the other.
No pressure, John.
You know, sticker shock actually does, having sat up here for a while, sticker shock creates a lot of discussion and debate, no doubt in the public. But I think from a realistic standpoint, which I think is, makes sense about smoothing, you know, personally. But on the other hand, you know, it's the taxpayer's money. If it's going to save them money, as much as it may seem small for some, it's their money that they can invest, or they can do whatever they want until we actually go out to bond it, which would make me inclined to say, I don't want to smooth it.
Okay.
So, I'd be inclined to say, we do it the way that you had proposed under the...
As a single.
Column three, as a single. I appreciate the concept of smoothing, because ideally, that's what you really want to do when you start doing all these capital projects, is try to maintain a certain amount, level it. And as some debt goes off, you bring on new debt, and you kind of maintain that level. Unfortunately, we're spiking, because all the deferred maintenance and the lack of, for whatever reason, things weren't done sooner in time, and now we have this huge spike. But, so that's why I think smoothing's a great idea long-term. But I just think right now, for a year or two, I'd be inclined to go more with giving it to the taxpayer until we actually, we need it.
And again, if the project were to...
Same amount at the end.
It is, it's going to be the same amount.
So, it's not like it's going to cost them anymore by smoothing. It just means you're not going to, you're going to pay first before you.
You kind of, it's gradual increase. So, what I'll do is I'll move forward with the town administrator.
Well, we have to take a vote.
We didn't vote.
It's not on your agenda to vote either.
Well, can't we vote?
We could.
As long as discussion is there.
We had a review and discuss.
Should we wait till it passes?
Well, I think, if I may, Mr. Chair, I think it's important if you're telling folks, the first question everyone asks is, what is the impact on my tax bill? And if we can't answer them, it's going to be, well, it could be this, it could be that, you know, depending on where the board goes. I think it would help the initiative if they had a solid answer as to what the impact's going to be.
The other thing, depending on what the board wants, directs me to do, is I can just do it as a single project issuing once, and that, and then just add the note at the bottom saying, you know, there may be an opportunity for some smoothing, and it will be discussed at the time. So you're not looking at either or, these types, multiple different numbers. This is the number. If you want the project, this is what you should expect it to impact you on the first year. If the board makes a decision later on that they want to do something different because interest rates are going crazy, or they want to take advantage of that because they've gotten some feedback from the community, we can do it, you could do it at that time.
Don't you typically do the average per year anyways?
I was just going to say, what's the house value that you have this piece on?
We don't do the average. I wouldn't average it over all of the years because you're not going to get to that average to the ninth year. So I wouldn't take the 22, 30 dividing it by 20.
Okay.
No, but you, I thought in the past you had done that.
No.
Taken all the payment, the 20 payments.
No, sorry. Badly burned in another community when someone did that to me, and yeah, no, I won't do that. I didn't do it, but somebody else did.
Excuse me. Well, here's the other thought. If we need to put a vote, excuse me, you can do it at the next meeting. It'll be pretty quick.
Well, in the meantime, I do need to get some documents out. If it's all right with the board, I'll put it out as the single issue.
You can vote now if you want, I don't care.
I don't mind. I mean, I have no problems with it, so at least you have guidance. That's what we're going to do. Well, do you need a vote? You've got a sense right now, that's what we want.
I'm going to vote for rounding if that matters anything.
Rounding. All right, so I think you got the census of the board then.
I'll get something out. Thank you so much.
Nancy, actually, let's stop there. Are there any questions from the audience? Yes, Jack?
Jack's House, 51, Crown Mansfield Drive. Just a question, what interest rate do you use for calculations?
We use 4.5%.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, Nancy, thank you very much.
The audience, no questions.
We're saving it for sewer. Let's move on to the 715. Can we do the 715 recognition?
I think I saw Phil von Eiderstein's here. I don't know about Walter.
If not, then we can move on to some other things.
What's out there?
I'll draw a table for the library.
Let's go down to the...
Who's Phil? Phil's here. I don't know if Walter Ferri is here. Yeah, this is...
It's all here.
We could probably get it done. Yeah, let's do it.
At Norton Clan, they're kind of big.
Yeah. I don't know if I see Walter. You can come around here.
There you go.
Jim?
Walter here? There he is, yeah. He's here. He's just...
We need a bigger hearing room.
Yeah. Phil got every plumber and every resident in town to get here.
Should have been over here.
Employees and daughters of employees, nieces, nephews.
It's the best desk.
No, he's here. They're both here. Is Bob here?
Yeah.
I can say Bob too.
Bob looks happy.
Well, I'd like to welcome everybody here who's come. This is recognition, I'll just say, Walter Ferri, a wiring inspector, 35 years, and Phil von Eiderstein, again, plumbing and gas inspector, 27 years. You know, I find being on this board, it's always been challenging in many ways for various reasons and issues that a lot of people talk about. But one of the most, I guess, say, not important, but one of the most, one aspect that's the least problematic, or what's the word I want, enjoyable, let's put it to you frankly. The most enjoyable aspect of being on this board is occasions like this. You know, we sit up here in public service and Paul, you know, get elected, but it's these individuals who actually have been doing public service, helping all constituents, helping all residents, for helping them to get what they need. In this case, you know, we have wiring inspector and we have plumbing. These are public services that people should appreciate, and they do, and they should continue to appreciate it. The difficulty is we've had people who've dedicated themselves for enormous amounts of time, you know? Lifetimes for some, 37 years is phenomenal. I mean, I guess I was in elementary school maybe at that point when some of these people start. In today's day and age, people don't stay in those capacities and those jobs for long. I'm not saying that's a criticism, but what I'm saying is, it's the dedication, commitment that people have given to this town and to your residents. And for me, it's a pleasure and it's an honor to be able to sit up here and say thank you, but more importantly, to recognize you, and because it's a great thing for the town, and it's a great thing for the residents who really should say thank you personally. I know there's some departments that tend to get a little bit more because of uniforms or whatnot, but the reality is, you've touched so many families, so many people to be able to do different things and do it the right way so that they don't get taken advantage of. And I just want to say personally, you know, I want to thank you both. That's why we bring you in here, we like to invite your families, because it is a big deal. We spent a lot of time on a lot of issues that are big in town, but this is quite an accomplishment. And that's not saying that you're retiring or anything, that's not our point, but to be able to say thank you very much for that term, that commitment, goes way in above. And so many people can't do that in their own professions or don't do it. And I just want to say personally, you know, I want to thank you both. That's why we bring you in here, we like to invite your families, because it is a big deal. We spend a lot of time on a lot of issues that are big in town, but this is quite an accomplishment. And that's not saying that you're retiring or anything, that's not our point, but to be able to say thank you very much for that term, that commitment, goes way in above. And so many people can't do that in their own professions or don't do it. And I just want to say, as chairman of the board at the Town and Situate, for the Board of Selectmen, I want to say thank you both. And I'll turn it over to the rest of my board. We have presence for you, but more importantly, it's the fact that you've done, been doing this for the residents. And just want to thank you both. Because I know you've been working with the gentlemen.
Thank you very much, John, thank you. And I speak for myself and Neil Duggan, who's worked with them longer than I have as people who are... As you said, you know, the people who do this work are not very visible to most people at all times, but when they're needed, they're desperately needed and they're absolutely critical to the process. These two gentlemen have both been with the town for a very long time. Have both been in the town for a very long time. I've known Phil since we were both children. And I would have to say that their service, their dedication, and just the kind of people they are, are what makes this town a wonderful place to live in. Not just for the people who's, who are touched by their particular duties, but really for all of us. The kind of inspection services that are provided by these gentlemen first take a tremendous amount of competence and skill, a tremendous amount of knowledge of not only the physical workings of their two trades, but of the regulations governing those trades. Takes a tremendous amount of honesty, intelligence, absolute integrity, and finally, and not at all least avoided, takes a tremendous amount of people skills. Every time you're out there, you're rubbing up against situations and people, whether they be contractors, or owners, or other interested parties, who have sometimes conflicting views of what's necessary or what has been done or not done, that kind of thing. And to manage that, to come away with everyone pleased with your performance, and knowing at the same time that all of the work that you viewed meets all the codes and regulations and is safe for all of those involved, it's no small accomplishment. It's really, I think, a remarkable achievement, and to do it consistently, day in and day out, over the period of time that we're talking about, is truly, truly phenomenal. I thank you both, and the town thanks you both. And I'm very glad this is not a retirement party. I'd be in serious trouble if you were. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
No, just thank you very much for your service. It's unsung, and you go out in storms, and you really get people back up in situations when they're harder than luck, and I, you know, you've done it for such a long period of time, I just want to thank you both for your service.
Likewise, thank you so much, and, you know, I don't think anyone can say it better than Bob just did, so, you know, but you've made this a safer town, so we appreciate it, and thank you for your continued service to the town.
The only thing I would add, because I think absolutely Bob covered it all, is this saying, you know, overflow people, I don't know if you could see it on TV land, but everyone's here because not only do they respect your work for the town, but they respect you as individuals, and so we're so happy to have you as part of our community.
It's you, Sean.
Thank you. I'm amazed at who's here, right? There's family, there's friends, there's competition, there's secretaries. And that, to me, says quite a bit. And I also want to thank you. I've worked a little bit with Phil, not with Mr. Ferri, but, you know, they covered it, but thank you very, very much. What Bob said was, I had a chuckle. I mean, that's, you're his ahs and ahs out there, and you're out there, you know, contractors might not be happy with you, or the homeowner's not happy with what you have to say, but you're doing the right thing.
Making it safer.
And making it safer. And thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, well, we'd like to give these, if that's okay.
I could, yeah. Here, I'll save you the... Walter?
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're both welcome to stay here. Frankly, I'm happy to end the meeting after this one, too.
I move to adjourn, sir.
Everyone want to stay for the rest of the meeting?
I think there's a key on to you.
I'm sure you guys want to go, too.
We'll give you a second to leave then.
Get to the game. Thank you very much, guys.
Phil.
Thank you, congratulations.
Shake your hand again.
Lisa, I'll see you later. Thank you very much. How are you?
You're welcome. You're more welcome.
So what we'll do is this, we have a public hearing at 7:20. We're a little early right now, so we're going to wait and go to some other items. So why don't we go down to, Jesse, I see that you're here for an 8:10 discussion on the outdoor entertainment permit. Can you come up?
Hello, Director Finney.
Good evening.
Hi.
So I'm assuming this is very similar to what you've done last year.
Correct.
Outdoor entertainment for like movies and...
So this is a concert series. We would maybe be coming back to you guys for something for movies in the fall, maybe, but this is a concert series funded by our friends of the library. Last year, we did it because it tied in nicely to our summer reading theme, which was libraries' rock. We had such a great turnout, between 100 to 200 or more people at each event. The weather was great for us. We're hoping it'll be as cooperative this year. So again, we're looking at Wednesday evenings. We are looking to push the time back to 6:30 because we did a little poll, and the one criticism that we got was that it's not quite enough time for those who are commuting in and out of the city to get there. So this will just give them a little bit more of a cushion. Well, we, as part of the Library of Things program, we're going to be investing and purchasing lawn games that people can check out of the library, but we're also going to have a set that people can use and check out to use on the grounds, especially for teens and kids this summer, to give them a little something else to do. But we're going to put those out on the lawn about an hour before the start of the concerts so that people can, you know, really just enjoy the space out there. And on the 10th, July 10th, is the first concert series. For that one, we will have a snow cone vendor at, from 5:00 to 7:00. And I have sent the chief, Chief Stewart, an email about a potential police detail just for that one. We had between 400 and 500 people at the kickoff last year, and the branch street was a little congested with parking along both sides of the street, so, you know, we may need their help with that event. So I've reached out to him about that. Otherwise, there are Wednesdays through August 14th, again, starting on July 10th, on the lawn, weather permitting, you know, hoping people will bring their lawn chairs and their dinners and just enjoy a night out. If the weather is not conducive, we'll have it in the community room instead.
Questions from the board?
I just, if you said you're pushing it back to 6:30, are your hours, Jesse, 6:30 to 7:30, or 6:30 to 8?
6:30 to 7:30, we occasionally have a band that will go a couple of songs over in a set, but typically right at 7:30.
Still 7:30. But you still want it to start at 6, to have that flexibility?
Did I put 6 on the permit? I apologize. No, I really do want it to start at 6:30.
Okay. Just so we say the right thing.
Motion?
That was mine, just...
Motion?
No.
The only question I have is, when is, do we have a schedule for when the sidewalk construction's going to be done? Is that too early?
It's, we're getting quotes right now. We're supposed to be presenting to the Building Commission on April 30th, so we'll have a better sense, I think, at that point. There absolutely could be some impacts that we'll have to think about with this. But until, until we have, you know, a contractor onboard, I'm just going to move forward with this.
Sure, you can go around the other side, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, it's such a great, great contribution to the community, so love it.
Motion?
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to the Situate Town Library Director, Jesse Finney, for Wednesday evenings, July 10th, July 17th, July 24th, August 8th, and August 14th, 2018, from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m.
Okay, can we just modify that to 2019?
That would, that might be nice. Sure, 2019, I'm just reading away.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There we go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great events.
Just going to jump around, is Jennifer, she in here? Let's see.
McCarthy's?
What about McCarthy's? I don't see them here yet, so how about...
Who wants to go?
The black apron?
The common vick?
Yeah, I was going to say that, black apron. Lauren Runkel?
Everybody wants to come early.
Why, we're so excited.
All right, is Milano's Pizza here?
Yeah.
All right, gentlemen.
All right. Yay! You get to jump in line.
Okay, so we're actually jumping around here to 7:40 discussion vote, common victual's license for Armbah? Is that it?
Armbahuanas.
Armbahuanas.
Armbahuanas, Doing Business Milano's Pizzeria, 259 Stockbridge Road, and is it Maggi, Maggi Mikhail?
Magdi Mikhail.
Okay, good evening, sorry. My apologies.
You're not the first one.
All right. So you're looking for a common victual's license to sell food, basically in pizzeria, is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
All right, want to tell us a little bit about it? Gets a little PR here as well as on some TV.
Wonderful. We just want to establish the basement is going to be like Italian style pizza.
Yep.
Are we just like, made like a kind of like a survey about the town, like, you know, like personally, we keep asking, you know, like a lot of residents, which style they love to do it and all of this stuff. We work in both like Greek style pizza, Italian pizza, but we figured out that the town over here in the Situate, I believe, you know, they recommend the Italian one. So we try to like make... So we try to like make a mix between the Italian-style pizza here, pizza and subs, salads. So whoever is going to come to our shop is not going to go anywhere, like subs, pizza, salads, you name it.
Do you have tables for sitting down or is it just takeout?
Yes.
Good.
Where is it?
It's 259 Stockbridge Road.
It's where the...
The fish and the deli?
On the right, please.
Okay, okay.
Are you going to occupy the whole building or just half?
No, just a portion of the building.
The right?
It used to be mics, yeah, to the left.
All right, where the seafood? If you're walking in the door on the right or if you're walking in the door on the left?
In the left. Because the right side, that's the lobster place. You know, mics subs?
Yeah.
We took all the, all the space.
So you're not mics subs, you're on the other side where the fish?
No, mics subs.
So there's, when you're facing the building, it's going to be on the left side of the front door.
The left side.
There you go. Looking out from the other direction.
I get lost. The left side, yeah?
When do you hope to open?
If we are lucky, it's going to be like in mid of May.
Right.
We try to open as soon as possible, but we're just taking our time to make everything matching together, you know, like matching with the, you know, like the way which the residents are going to love it. So we're not in a rush to do it something like, we're just taking our time, you know, like to make everything.
Good to get it planned out and also get prepared because there'll be a lot of people looking for food, especially as the warmer weather comes. Sean?
Your hours, what are your hours going to be?
The hours? The hours? We try to do it in the winter like 10 to 10, but the summertime, because you know, we close the water, people like stay late. If you can, like 11 or 12, just like the Friday and Saturday, you know, because people come into the water, people walk outside.
Yep.
If you can, over like a couple hours late. If not, that's, that's okay.
The hours on this?
We try to serve as much as we can, like in the summertime, only we're looking for like extended hour a little bit. Not for anything, but try to like extend, you know...
Just live there.
Yeah, you know, like, you know, like to make everybody like, if you want to enjoy the, to get something like while they're enjoying outside, you know, the nice weather in the summertime, so hopefully.
Good, excited for you. Questions from the board? Any further questions?
Don't we need to determine the hours of operation, so in our motion?
Yeah.
So, could you be a little more specific? Do you, it does 10 to 11 p.m.? Is that your preferred? We have to identify your hours of operation when we do this?
Yeah, did in a way we can do it like from 10 to 12.
What's a resident, what are the, what are the other places around there? Because that's kind of a residential area, isn't it? Behind it?
It's in the business.
Is it midnight?
Yeah.
What do we know?
It's only the summertime. It's not every, all the year, just a couple months in the summer. You know, that's...
When does Reva's close, the pizzas?
9:00, I think. I'm not up that late. Yeah, I mean, 12:00, it's going to be pretty quiet around, but you never know.
What are the other places open? What are the hours of some of the other places?
I didn't look that up.
Okay.
I think most of things shut down pretty early in Situate, 9:00 typically.
I think Maria's is 9:00.
Eva's is 10 to 11 on Friday and Saturday.
Oh, they're open till 11?
Friday and Saturday.
Who is?
Until...
Reva's Pizza.
10:00 Monday through Thursday. All right, so the reason we're saying this is, one is to be consistent, the other is you'd probably be sitting at the desk or the countertop or standing at the countertop from 11 to 12, getting nothing. So our thought is, why don't we try this? We'll create an hour for you. If it turns out that it's not going to be helpful, you can always come back to the board, or next year you can ask to increase it. No, we're not looking to say no, it's just, we might be doing you a favor by saying you can close early and go home and get some sleep. So what were the hours again?
Do they prefer like just 10 to 11 on the weekends and 10 to 10 during the week?
That might be a good idea.
10 to 10.
10 to 10 from the weekday, Monday through Friday, or maybe Sunday through Thursday, and then Friday, Saturday, you stay open till 11.
But we try to open Sunday, too. Yeah, yeah, that's what we say.
Okay.
All right, so Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. All right.
Sounds good.
So why don't we do this? Can somebody make a motion? Move to approve a common vicuall's license for Milano's Pizzeria located at 259 Stockbridge Road, Situate, Massachusetts, 02066, for hours from 10 a.m. until 10 p.m. Monday, Sunday, no, Monday through Thursday, and from 10 a.m. until 11 p.m., Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. Pending Board of Health approval.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Ms. Canfield. Discussion, any questions from the audience at all? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gentlemen, welcome and good luck, all right?
Thank you.
We shouldn't discuss these nights when we haven't had dinner yet.
All right.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you again, gentlemen. All right, so let's move on to a 7:20 public hearing discussion vote, the application for new seasonal all-alcohol license for Driftway Convenience Store located at 48 New Driftway, Joseph Tibbetts. Is Mr. Tibbetts here? Mr. Tibbetts?
Let me just jump.
Come on in, have a seat. Let me just go through here. What's that, did you want to...
I don't know if there are people in the hallway that are here, I don't know.
Could you just open that door? Sure, just if people want to. May not. Just going to move this over, Mr. Tibbetts, so we have...
I'm going to have you talking to the microphone, okay?
Okay.
So the people at home like to hear you, you're on TV land.
All right, well, good evening, Mr. Tibbetts.
Can you?
So you're here because you're looking to open a convenience store at the place that's at, is it 48 New Driftway? Is that the exact address that you're looking at?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. And in addition to that, you're looking for an application for a seasonal liquor, which would include liquor, beer, and wine license. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And is this something that you are actually going to own or is this something that you're looking to sublease and have somebody else come in and...
As it stands right now, I'll be the owner.
Okay. And who would be the manager that's going to be?
I'll be the manager.
Okay. And as the manager of it, you realize that you're going to be there on a, how often?
Quite often.
Well, I kind of need to know, like, what's your proposal for being on there?
10 hours a day.
Okay.
I have it all written down. If you want copies, I can give you copies afterwards. Sorry for my being late, I was in Boston in a meeting.
So we also have William Tibbetts, and that's...
Yes.
Thank you.
This was supposed to start at 7:20. What time is it?
7:23.
7:21.
7:21. What time did we start? How long you been up here?
I have 7:23, and that's why I started at 7:20, Mr. Tibbetts. So we're actually starting at the time. That's approved.
Thank you.
And...
Good, how are you?
So what are, aside from the hours...
Ms. Canfield? Good, how are you?
I am good, Mr. Tibbetts. Aside from there, so what's your proposal for the time? 10 hours a day? Is that what you're proposing? I'm trying to get a sense.
I'd say from 7:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night.
All right.
Maybe 6:00 in the morning, you know, depending on what the traffic justifies.
Okay.
All this is pretty fluid, too, as we get into it, we'll be having different schedules.
Well, that's kind of what we're kind of trying to figure out now, because I'm trying to figure out what your timing of your...
But what is the manager at Ranald's? How long is he there every day?
Okay. So I guess my question, Mr. William Tibbetts, are you the gentleman who's actually presenting this? Is it going to be you or is it your father who's actually?
As the council.
Okay. So let's just back up a second, because my understanding it's your father who's presenting this and not you. And I'm just trying to get some answers here, all right?
Okay, two questions specifically.
So, Mr. Joseph Tibbetts, what I'd like to know is, what are the hours that you're proposing to be open for the convenience store?
Right now, it would be 7:00 to 10:00, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Okay. And is that seven days a week that you're looking to do, sir? All right. And what are you proposing for your timing that you said as the manager? Because the manager has to be on the premises a majority of those hours.
And who checks in on that?
Mr. Joseph Tibbetts, do you have...
The other businesses in town, who checks in?
Mr. William Tibbetts, I'm asking you a question, please, okay? I'll get you, I will, Mr. Tibbetts, okay? This is, let's get, let's get the ground rules understood.
Give and take in this situation, sir.
I'm asking you to listen for one minute, Mr. Tibbetts, okay? This is a give and take, yes it is. It's a question and answer, and I will give you ample opportunity to ask questions, and if you need to take a statement, fair enough, I'll give you that opportunity. But we can't talk over each other, okay?
So you ask the question, and then we just go, and then we go back and forth? It doesn't, there's no like dialogue?
So what happens is, this board's asked questions, okay? Not just me, it's all five members here. And we're going to ask questions, and once we got our answers, then if you have some observations or statements you want to make, you're free to do it, and I'm going to open it up to the audience.
Sure.
And at that time, I'm going to say to the audience, do you have questions? And then we're going to ask those questions if we think and deem that they're necessary or appropriate, then we're going to ask you folks. Right now, I'm asking your father, because he's the one who did the application, okay? And I understand that you want to assist him and help him, I have no problems with that.
Okay, don't treat me like a child.
You can't interrupt me.
Ask him the questions.
No, you can't, Mr. Tibbetts, you cannot interrupt me, because I'm the chairman.
Waste of time, ask him the questions.
I can easily bring this to a vote, Mr. Tibbetts, quickly, and it'll be very quickly and summarily, and I don't think you're going to like that if you're going to keep interrupting us, because you're interrupting this process. And if you interrupt the process, you're out, okay? So do we have ground rules, do you understand the ground rules here?
Do you?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Tibbetts?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to get back to the question about your time that you're planning on being in the store as a manager for this license.
I'll be...
Again, I understand the hours that you have, I just need to know what you're proposing, sir.
7:00 to 10:00.
I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood. When you're going to be there, I know the store's going to be open from 7:00 to 10:00, that's what you're proposing. And I'm asking you as a manager, you need to understand...
You answered the question twice, you said 7:00 to 10:00 twice.
Would you...
And the reason I'm asking, Mr. Joseph Tibbetts, is because I know that you can't be there seven days a week, 7:00 to 10:00, so I'm trying to get a sense of what your operating are going to be, that's all.
Well, my intent is to organize the facility to the point where I don't have to be there 24/7.
Okay.
And that's where management skills would be of a premium. And so 7:00 to 10:00, and if I have to be there, I'll be there. I only, I live exactly three miles from there.
Okay. What are you proposing for your time for the liquor license, shall we say? If you're to be granted it, what are you seeking for the time on it?
Candidly, I don't know if there are limits as to when you can be open for liquor, but I'm willing to do, you know, whatever the, you know, I don't know what the limits are.
Okay.
May I interject, please?
Just did, so please.
A seasonal liquor license goes from April, starts April 1st, as far as I'm, as far as my research, and then it goes for eight months out of the year. Am I wrong?
Yes.
Yeah, you are, actually, but it can go, a seasonal license is, can be determined by this board to be anything as long as April 1st until January 15th. That's as long as we can grant it. We can also shorten it, too.
Okay.
The board has the discretion to do that.
We'd like a full year. We took a big hit with this whole Cumberland Farms there that everyone knows about, and we're trying to make things right here, and collect our losses and open a business there, which I think that in the first place was what the village business overlay district was all about, bringing assets to the community, and I think the Cumberland Farms was still a really good deal, and I'm really disappointed still in that. And we just would like to open a liquor store now with the convenience, a country failing to it. We've got a nice spot, we've got a nice location. I don't think there's too much competition in the town, would be hurting anybody specifically. I understand you didn't want the gas station there, but I mean, the entranceway to, you mentioned about the entranceway to Situate not wanting to be a gas station. Like I said before, you know, it's a dilapidated medical building, it's a Dunkin' Donuts, a dump, a doggy daycares, animal hospital, a train station, a construction yard, you know, I mean, it's not, this would be an asset to your community, I believe, sir.
I just want to state, make something that's crystal clear. This board had nothing to do with whatever happened on that property with Cumberland.
I've moved on with that, sir.
With Cumberland Farm.
This is Plan B.
I just want to make sure.
I just don't want to have to go to Plan C.
You keep raising it, this board had nothing to do with it. I don't even know what was filed, so let's keep that out of the equation, okay?
Okay. I mean, if you didn't know what was going on in your head, selectmen, that's sad.
Mr. Tibbetts, this is not going to be a, shall we say, backslap to the board coming in here and saying these things that are absolutely unfounded and that are fake, okay? So get off that, okay? You're here for a convenience store right now.
Yep.
You're not here for Cumberland Farm or some gas station issue that you raised, okay?
Mr. Chairman, the liquor hours in Massachusetts are 8:00 to 11:00 Monday through Saturday, 10:00 to 11:00 on Sunday.
That's what we'd like.
May I make a statement, Mr. Canfield?
One second, so that you understand, this is not a year-round license, though, it is only a seasonal.
That's fine.
So I want to make sure we understand.
Yes, sir. Thank you for considering it.
That was my point.
Okay.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to that is, the reason that you can't come before us for a whole-year license is because there are none available. There's a finite amount that the town's allowed by the, you know, that we have no control over, I believe, that it's set, and they're already full.
I don't want any favors, I just wanna be treated fairly.
Well, we couldn't grant it if we wanted to.
That's all right.
They're just not, and the reason that they aren't, they're aren't available is because the state feels that the town is fully, has enough liquor stores. So I just wanna be clear on that.
Based on population.
Yeah, based on the population.
Yeah, we, um-
Would you?
I guess one question I wanna ask Mr. William Tibbits is, what is your proposal, your involvement in this convenience store?
I'm 50% landowner of the property, I'm the landlord.
So are you actually gonna be working in the store?
No.
Will you be involved in any way of the management of the store?
No. I'm only here for my father's support, support my father, my family.
Questions from the board at this point? I've got a few more, but I didn't know if anybody wanted to-
I have a que, I'm just confused. Is the convenience store already approved and it's good to go? Where are you with your plans with regards to that?
There's, I think at 7:30, there's a meeting about the vicuula license, vicuula licenses, excuse me.
I think it maybe went back, got backwards.
Well, it says, um, right now, 7:20.
Yep, you're right, it's right afterwards.
Right afterwards, so.
All right, so these plans that are included, are they already underway, or has?
Yeah, we filed all the paperwork, everything, we've had our lawyer-
Paid a $200 fee to the state.
You know, we've been working on this for about six months, so, I mean, everything's been in order. There's nothing that, as far as I can tell, that we didn't do. We have the site plan for the planning board, which is tomorrow night supposedly.
So that's tomorrow night, okay.
I think so.
No, we have a meeting with the planning board staff tomorrow.
Okay.
To go over which site plan needs to be filed.
Okay.
And then they'll have to file with the planning board for site plan, but it is an approved use in that zone, so.
Is, or is not?
Yeah, we'll speak for the planning board, but it's just, it's a process they have to go through, but there shouldn't be any impediment to the planning board approving it, cause it is an approved use, but they have to go through the site plan process.
Okay, thank you. I have some questions, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
So to, not to mix the two conversations, but they're related, is if, if you aren't granted the alcohol license, will you still be opening, going forward with doing your convenience store?
Right, I didn't, I told you I didn't know the hours that were allowed. And now that we're, I've been enlightened, you know, we're happy to go, you know, with those hours.
She's talking about the difference between-
Right, no, but if you, if you're not allowed to sell alcohol, will you still wanna operate a convenience store on that site and go forward with the planning?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I re, I bought the property with the intent to lease, to do, do a land lease with Cumberland Farms. They came before the planning board and were, they discouraged themselves, I guess, because they didn't wanna put gas tanks behind the store as opposed to in front of the store, in the conventional situation. And they backed out, they withdrew from the plan, so now I'm in a position where I have quite a bit of money, though. I owe quite a bit of money from the purchase of it, and I have to do some way to pay the mortgage. And the most, I have a real estate firm that's commercial trying to do some leasing out of the existing space. We've cleaned up the building and cleaned up the site. And that's, this, the, we're in a position where we're gonna, option one is to open up the stores and generate the income that way. And option two is to, which we're just, it's in the planning stages, is to develop the real estate by tearing down the building and putting in retail and residential. There's a, I think there's an acre and a half there to do it. But that's further down the road, so you can't, you can't be paying interest and taxes and insurance and not have any income, so. That's, that's the plan, that's why we're here, and any, whatever it is, I'm here to cooperate so that I can go forward.
Sean?
Well, I think I know the answer to this, but I'll just ask it, and then, you know, I don't think you've been in this business before, so our concern is with all our children and everything is liquor, and how serious that is. And tips certified, and I don't know much about it, but there's a whole courses that not only you'd have to take, everyone in the store that might be behind the register's gonna have to take. Have you taken any steps, Joe, to educate yourself on all that stuff, on the whole liquor sales?
Not to this point, no. I will, you know, if, if there's, if that's a concern, I'll, uh, I'll work with somebody to, to get the, educate myself and my workers.
If you look back at the past few years, if there's been violations, or there've been people go, you know, Sand Hills went from seasonal to year-round. I think Tony said it the clearest, and he just said it loud and clear. If there are violations, then the penalties will be severe. I mean, between us, we probably have 20 children, and all the kids in this town are our children, so we don't want to hear any accents, any problems whatsoever. It's just, it's a, it's a difficult business, so.
Yeah, I've been here, just to, you know, give my background, I've been here since 1953. Mr. Van Niderstein, Mr. Vogel, Mr. Farrier, I'm close, or not close, but well acquainted with all of them. And Neil Duggan, also coached Little League at the same time, things like that, so.
Sean, it is a requirement about liquor policies that he would have to get certified in one of those within three months.
So he could open and then get certified after, Jim?
The policy says within three months of taking the position.
Okay.
Of taking the position.
And we'd have to have a liability insurance, I'm sure, so that, that all goes along.
One of the things I noticed, I'm just trying to get up to, many of the stores have adopted a system where they check the IDs.
Yeah.
And have you explored anything along that, Mr. Tibbits, as to, to doing that? Do you intend to do that?
I would intend to do that.
The reason I say it is because of fake IDs, as well as trying to avoid young, younger teenagers from doing it. I just didn't know if you've seen or seen that report.
No, that's, it's something that we work on, I'm happy to work on.
That is also a requirement as a new establishment, and you can meet with Anne Marie, and Anne Marie can tell him what the different types of machines are that she's seen that have a good reputation, seem to work, but that is another requirement. The class, I asked Anne Marie, the class only takes a day or so, so he can get it done fairly quickly, even before he gets up and running. How often do they run them often?
They run them often in different sites, we have one upcoming in Situate next week, 10:30.
So.
Tony?
Yeah, I mean, I'll give you my two cents, you know, I think, one, it's commercially zoned area, you know, and I think a convenience store would be great there. It's gonna be a developed area, there's stuff going across the street, you know, that's gonna, the, the whole property in the, in the MBTA parking lot's gonna be, you know, turning that area around as well. The big thing with me is whether a seasonal liquor license is appropriate for the space or not. I think if we did have a full-time, a full-time liquor license, then that would be another story, as far as I'm concerned. I, I really have to decide whether this is really a seasonal situation, because I view it as a little bit differently, and I've, I've had come see-
Also, sir.
I'll tell you in a minute. But in terms of that property being used for a commercial area and being a convenience store, I support it 100%. You know, I-
Well, if the bait, if the bait store had stayed, they could have brought their beer and their bait.
Well, you get your property, you can do whatever you want with it, so.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, I guess my, my question is more, what are you, what are you trying to do with the property? Is it a, you know, using the full building, is it gonna be food? Is it gonna be, is it gonna be like a 7-Eleven? Are you really emphasizing the liquor? Are you, are you really emphasizing the food aspect of it? You know, what are your ideas for the space?
I think I'd probably get a lot of customers if I gave them free coffee and get started, but the-
Your business too long, wouldn't you? No, that's-
You bring them in the door, they're gonna spend something.
Right.
I think the long-term goal would be to develop, enhance the site, but I don't have a specific plan yet, and-
So that's kind of what, you come before us and you want us to give you a license, and we really wanna, you know, I saw your sketch there, but I, you know, we really have to see if that's the best fit for the area, if that's it.
Am I fit to answer this question as his son? Cause we've been talking about this for six months.
Mr. Tibbits? If you can just, if you can just, Mr. Tibbits?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tibbits, you interrupted me at town meeting, I was on a roll then, I'm on a roll now. So, so let me just finish what I'm saying, and then you can talk whatever you want. You're just making the process more difficult.
No, you are.
Billy.
You really, if you just let me go through the process, instead of all this stuff, you're gonna have a chance to talk and ask questions.
He's sitting there saying that, that he doesn't have this thing like designed out to a key, so that's a problem, that's not a problem.
Wait a sec, wait a sec.
It's all a process.
Wait a second.
Life is a process.
Hey, Billy, if you want my vote is yes-
He asked him to have like where the chip racks are gonna be tonight. Get outta here with that, John.
John, if you, if you listen to our, these hearings before, Billy.
I have.
All right. They are so specific on, you know, for restaurants, for example, how many seats there will be, or Tedeschi's in North Situate, what cool is being used for beer and wine. It really is pretty important to this board to know, is it gonna be like, uh, are you gonna be like Curtis Liquors up on 3A and, and have 99% alcohol and maybe a couple of, you know, chips or something on your way out? I think that's what Tony's asking. Or is it gonna be like Charlie Reynolds and, and have, you know, 50/50% of family store as well as, you know, liquor? I think that's where Tony's going, but it is very specific.
Here you go.
I do, I think I have that picture in, in the packet.
It's in the packet.
Oh, maybe not.
We, we did, but you know what, we'll take it anyways, if that's all right, so I can, the board can see it handy right in front of us.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, but-
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was in the packet.
Yeah, I have this.
Basically, if I could create a 7-Eleven or a Cumberland Farms tomorrow, that's what I'd do. That was my plan. And it didn't happen, so now I've got a nice piece of real estate, a building that we cleaned up. We have, it's just like a roller coaster trying to release out the space.
Because of the planning board?
Well, no, it's not the planning board.
Yes, it is, Dad.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we have to decide, and, you know, I, I have no problem with the vicuula license. I think, put a store there, do great. I have to, I'm questioning whether liquor license is, is a component of it. And you said earlier, it doesn't, not that it doesn't matter, but you're gonna open a store regardless of whether you get the liquor license or not.
Right.
So.
We want the liquor license.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
And we're happy to do whatever you request, it's under control.
So how, how do you see-
Have a seat, have a seat, don't worry.
How do you see this being kind of a-
I felt like it was a-
You're a lawyer, you're in the middle there, that's okay. Perry Mason moment, but thank you.
Explain the seasonality to me, why you think your, your store is appropriate for a seasonal liquor license?
Oh, because it's, when the people are coming into town, like Mr. Burmind said, it's the entryway to Situate. And you're gonna, you're driving home, you wanna stop for a cold one, or a sp- You're thinking to yourself, I'm going to, I'm almost home, I can pick up a six-pack and go home and watch the hockey game, you know?
Yeah, but again, the seasonality aspect of it, cause these licenses are specific for, you know, in the town of Situate, our population almost doubles during the summer. And that's kind of, I think, the thought press in my head, why we would use a seasonal license for it, for a place that is, you know, greatly impacted for that, and there's a need, you know, there's an increased need.
There's 100,000 people here in the summer, and there's only 10,000 people here.
You know, I'm gonna ask to postpone it if, if I keep getting interrupted.
I'm answering the question.
We'll talk about it in two weeks.
I'm proud of us. I told you I'm his counsel.
Quiet.
Why am I not his counsel, his son? We've been together for 40, 40 years.
Mr. Tibbits, Mr. Tibbits, the, the point is that when we're all having conversation, we need to take turns, because otherwise, we're not gonna get very far.
I appreciate that.
Well, why don't you answer to me then, if, if you're his counsel? Why do you see this as a seasonal situation?
Cause we have 100,000 people here in the summer.
We don't have 100,000.
Yes, we do. There have been studies that there are harvests, flooders to 100,000 people on heritage days, on these, on St. Patty's Day, on Christmas, on all these holidays. This is a family place, people come down here with their families. There's tons of people around here. I've spent a year fixing up that building, watching all the traffic go by my building. There's way, way more people now with the train. There's way, way more people moving from out of country. There's way, way more people here than there was eight years ago, okay?
Explain to me the seasonality component of it.
The people that all keep their boats, the people that come back from Florida, they're all back here.
So you have to convince me that you're a se-
No, I don't.
If you want my vote to, if you want my vote, yes you do.
No, I don't have to convince you.
Billy, Billy, shut the fuck up.
This is crazy, the, the questions you're asking.
You, you want us to vote yes to give you this license, and you're doing everything you can to make it not happen. I understand.
Cause there's more people here in the summertime, that's why we want it seasonally.
And why is your establishment, I can understand an establishment being in Hummerock saying, okay, there's a seasonal population, it changed-
There's more parking to the town in my building.
Just let me finish my thought, right? There's more people there, it's, it, the population triples in time, there's no liquor stores, and there's one in this, and there's a need for it in the summer. That's my idea of what a seasonal establishment is. You're in Greenbush, you're in an area that is not really affected seasonally, and I wanna get, I want you to convince me why I should vote yes to give you a seasonal license.
Okay, cause people come down to the beaches, and that rotary, and that train station, and that light is jam-packed with people, and it'd be nice to take a little breather off and pull into a station. People are coming to my building for the past year, and like hanging out in my parking lot and talking on the phone. It's a perfect spot for people in the community to stop and take a breather, and do something, and grab a pack of gum, and to get a beer, or whatever else. There's 100,000 people in some, some weekends here. There's 50,000 people in the summer some weekends. There's 20,000 people down here now, and there's only, how many liquor stores? Who's competing with who around here?
We're maxed out with the number of liquor, liquor stores that we can have in town. We have absolutely as many as we can have.
How many convenience stores do we have in town? Not enough.
May I?
So the convenience goes with the liquor.
No, it doesn't.
Not always.
No, it doesn't, but it really does in this world. If you can get beers and a scratch ticket, or and a pack of cigarettes, or and a candy bar, you're gonna do that, or and in some shopping, or something.
Mr. Tibbits, you may be right, I'm sorry, I'd like, I'd like you to-
This is a matter, you can't prevent people from doing stuff.
Mr. Tibbits, you may be absolutely right about whether we should have it or not, but we are governed by the state's mandate of what we are allowed to have as far as liquor licenses. So just cause we think it's a good idea, unfortunately, we don't get to do that.
Yeah, that's why we're going for seasonal, not full year.
Right, well, seasonal is the only thing that your father would like to try.
And that's what you told us to, when you, when you knocked the Cumberland Farms down, when you knocked the town administrator's office, and they said, hey, why don't you go for this? This is what we're gonna help you do. And now here, we're doing it, and you're not helping us do it. This is insane.
So the example of a seasonal that I think Mr. Vignani's suggesting, Tony, you'll correct me, I know, would be like Sand Hills General Store, okay? Because it was a general store seasonally, because all the residents come down there and are buried during the summer. And so we actually did grant a seasonal liquor license, not liquor, beer and wine license. They don't have liquor, they only have beer and wine. And then ultimately, they had it for a few years, they performed, they did exemplary. They actually are the gold center for a lot of the monitoring. And so they then applied for year-round, when it opened up, cause one of the other stores had closed. And so that's why they have it. But they started out the seasonal because they were a seasonal location.
It was-
And I see what you're covering.
And it was, seasonal was what was available.
Right.
A, a perfect example of a seasonal in the traditional mode would be the, the little place across the river down in Hummerock.
Yep.
I don't, Voyager or something?
Voyage right now, yeah, it used to be the San Ten Cafe.
That would be, that would, in my mind, be a, a perfect seasonal. We're not, we're gonna, we're applying for a seasonal because that's all that's available, and we would hope to follow in the footsteps of the people at Sand Hills, and perform well enough that you would feel it was safe or a, a good idea to let us have the next available license. That, that's why we're applying for a seasonal. And I, I don't, I don't think that there's any, and we're not trying to say we will, we-
The point that one's on Turner Road and one's on Driftway just doesn't make any sense. It's a seasonal community, it's a seasonal town.
Look at that.
It makes, it's, it's, it's right on the North River, how's that?
I'm gonna, I'll be candid.
It's Sand Hills Beach, all the North River, take your pick. There's people putting boats in there, there's a ramp down by my house in, on Jericho.
Bill, I'm gonna be candid with you. The issue I have is, if you're involved in this business, because, you know what? That's, that's the big huge 10,000, 5,000, really.
That's the elephant in the room, I get it, man.
You got it, and that's the concern, because you don't, you're not listening right now.
No, no, no.
And that question is, what's gonna happen with the management of the store? If some kid comes in there, our biggest concern is the sale to minors, okay? Breaking those laws.
I'll give you my guarantee that my father would-
And I would love, hold on, let me just finish. I would love for the fact that that never happens there, if you get it. I, that's, that's all I care about. But the concern I have is if something happens. Because that's the concern I have with Tedeschi's, that's the concern I've had down at the Situate Market.
I'm worried about getting hit by a car when I walk out in the parking lot, too. I mean, what are we talking about? We're trying to make a living here, that's it.
Yeah, and-
Cause this is regulated.
Give us a chance. I mean, what, you, you take a risk, you know, waking up in the morning, so.
Give us-
And I have to say, the other problem is, trying to advocate for your dad, your best thing would be to let your dad talk. Be honest with you, I, I, best thing is to let him talk.
I don't need your advice.
No, what I'm telling you right now, because I'm really prepared to vote right now. The more you talk, the more I'm willing to take that vote, right now.
I do not need to be your advice, sir.
I'm not giving you advice, but I'm just telling you that you're hurting your dad's case to getting an application or a license for- or a license for...
I don't believe I am. I don't believe we'd be here, and be taken seriously if I wasn't here.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for comments from the board?
That's gonna be very debatable. We'll let the public debate that.
I'd like, may I just, um...
Shut up.
Just like, Mr. Tibbetts, Joe Tibbetts, I'd like to just state my position. I think there's a lot of work and research that you need to conduct before you're provided an alcohol license, whether it be seasonal or permanent. So I would love to see you get your business...
What are you staring at, Mr. Tibbetts? What do you want? You wanna get in a staring contest?
I'm talking to Mr. Joseph Tibbetts.
I know, but I'm just telling, no, I'm the chair here, and I'm running the meeting, and you know what? If this is what it's turning into, intimidation, cut it out. Because otherwise, out the door you go. And I'm not talking about your dad, because he's been a gentleman, and he's been respectful. You haven't. Cut it out. Go ahead.
So I would love to see you be successful with the business, starting off as a convenience store. Get your feet on the ground, and see how that goes before I could support a liquor license in that location today. So I think there's a lot, I think there's a lot to it, and a lot of responsibility that comes with it, and information that neither of you really have handy this evening, so I just...
Specifically, ma'am, please, just tell us, what specifically do you want?
I understand. All the questions that we were at, all the board members asked...
They didn't say anything was, and the word, invalid. They didn't say anything wasn't appropriate. Everything checked out on our...
They are all things that you still need to pursue and discover, and get licenses and training.
No, that's three months. They had a three-month grace period.
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right.
Their application is in order.
Your application is in order. I personally, in order to approve your alcohol application, would like to see a little bit more knowledge, and also see...
More knowledge?
Yes, with regards to the alcohol...
How do you see knowledge?
So, Mr. Joseph Tibbetts, I would love to see you get your business up and running, and I have no problem approving the vicular license. But I know we haven't taken a vote yet, but I'm not ready to approve a liquor license this evening. So that's where I stand.
I understand.
Thank you.
Let me go?
Sure.
I agree. I thank you for your characterization of why you went for the seasonal. I understand it. That makes sense from a business perspective, to get the seasonal, get it up and running, and then, you know, wait in line, basically. My concerns are, and I agree with Ms. Curran, that I think that's a great location for a convenience store, and I think that you'll do well with all of, as your son said, all the traffic that goes there, and that's great. I am also very concerned that, you know, we've, I haven't been on the board as long as the rest of the members, but I've been here long enough to have several people come in who have, have foul of the regulations and the rules. They've, you know, either sold to minors, or whatever the infraction was, and they've come before the board. And, you know, it's a very serious thing, because as the board has said, it affects everyone. So I know you have an opportunity to learn those things. I'm not comfortable granting a license with the, having a really good grasp of what the rules and regulations are. And the third point that I have is, I really feel that since we are at the max for the number of permanent licenses, which is really more appropriate for your site, I would rather, as Ms. Curran said, is you to get your feet on, you know, learn those things that need to be responsible alcohol seller, and then maybe revisit it down the road, but those are my concerns, right now.
So that's a no?
We haven't had a vote yet, sir.
Is that a no from you, too?
We'll have a vote when we're all done with our comments, and the public has had a chance to comment, too.
Okay. Can wait for that.
I came here tonight, you know, given this a lot of thought. I said, you know, paying taxes on the property, it's an expensive piece of property. You have every right to do it. It's within the business district. And you guys have been in town for a long time, and I said, you know, probably see what happens. Billy, you're getting all wound up, and this is nothing. This is nothing to the pressures of selling alcohol day... Hang on, Billy, hang on, I'm talking, all right? People behind you know what this is all about. They know what I'm talking about, all right? There's a, people think, I've seen it before, they get a beer and wine license, or a liquor license, and they think they're gonna make a million dollars. I don't know a lot about the business. I just know there's a lot of liability that goes along with it. I'm trying to keep an open mind, but your dad said it earlier, that he wouldn't mind a convenience store to start out with. The season, this license isn't gonna go anywhere. There's nobody knocking on our door. If you wanna know how I'm gonna vote, I'd say we hang on to the liquor license. Granted, you grant the common vic. If you don't like our decision, you can appeal it to the ABCC.
I love respect, Sean.
I sat on this board, sat on this board, when we denied one in the harbor, and they appealed it, and they got it. So I just think, I just think it's a real learning experience. I just think it's a business that you need to get your feet wet first, and see what it's like. I don't think I'd take it on. It's... So I, you know, I'm not, like I said, I don't see myself granting this license to anyone else. And the seasonal thing, I agree with you. I do agree with you. You know, I know what Tony's saying. It would be perfect in Humrock, you know, where this population triples or quadruples. But I, no, I see what you're saying. I think the population on the east side of the rotary doubles, all right, in the summer. So I'd give you the seasonal without, I understand that.
So what's the problem?
I just think, I just...
We're gonna sell to minors? That's nuts.
You and your dad...
You're afraid we're gonna sell to minors? That's why you deny our license? Without ever selling to a minor? Tony, you can say, yeah, it's not fair. You're not being fair.
But no, no, it has to do with experience.
It's fine. Yeah, okay, you don't have experience, like checking an ID? It's a bouncer. I was a bouncer in Quincy. Check it out. 2007.
Just start, just start with 60.
I haven't been able to get a job, good job, since then. And now I finally got something going, and you won't let me have a liquor license? And you're denying my gas station?
That's the way, Billy, hang on a second. We had nothing to do with the gas station. Nothing to do with it.
Oh, I win for selectmen. This is crazy.
Then there'd be a conflict of interest, Billy.
We, uh...
You can go.
Mr. Joseph Tibbetts, another thought to think about. If, you know, you go forward to the convenience store, what I might suggest is to consider, instead of going for the seasonal from April until January, do it for a limited time period, from say, June till October, November. Just try it for a year or two, see how it goes. And then, we did that with Sand Hills, because we weren't too sure how they were gonna set it up. I think it was one year, and they came back, operation was running, and we said, okay, at that point, we expanded it to max. They came back, and they said, you know, we're doing well, we've been doing things. I think that would be an attempt to show and demonstrate that, yes, you got the convenience, and you're looking at maybe, and going from that standpoint. I am not gonna be sitting on the board at that time, but I just wanna at least give you an idea that that's a thought process to try to demonstrate to the board, the future board, that yes, you know, you got the convenience, and yes, the seasonal. When I heard you say it's seasonal, that's why we're doing it, I agree with you, that's kinda how I would do it. I know Tony's saying, well, it's not a seasonal area. I see the value of it, because it's on the Driftway, and you get a lot of traffic there. And I can see how people during the summer is gonna be using it to get food, maybe get some beverages, and then head down to their boats or something. I get that. But at this point, just a suggestion, you might think about approaching it that way.
Well, why don't I withdraw the application for the seasonal? And that way, I'm not, I haven't been denied.
That's a good, no, that's actually very wise.
Really good, yeah.
Can we get the vicular license?
It's up next.
That's coming up next. So I, then I think officially, we will need from you, just in writing, that you're withdrawing, or, I guess verbally, that you're verbally withdrawing the application for the seasonal liquor license.
It's on the record.
It's on the record, okay. Hold on one second, we'll get to the vicular license, how about that? I think we've pretty much discussed the store, and I don't think anybody has any questions on that. Or, anybody have any questions up here?
We would just need hours for this as well, what you're suggesting.
Seven to 10, though, I think, is what he was saying.
Is what you said? Okay.
Monday through, seven days a week, right, Mr. Tibbetts?
And it still needs to be approved by the planning board? Is that what you said earlier?
Yeah, I'm gonna meet with them tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock.
Okay, so we would have to do pending approval of the planning board, would that be...
I think, selling bait, selling auto parts, in my books, it's like selling, if you're selling sandwiches, or candy bars, or food stock, granted, you know, it's a little different, but it's the same use in my mind. So I don't see that being a problem for you. So, 7 to 10, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week. And pending, I guess, site plan approval, which I can't imagine being an issue. So is there a motion? Or actually, strike that?
We have a motion. I'm sorry. I just wanna make sure we include it.
Yeah.
But before I do, are there questions from the audience?
We also have pending board health approval of workers' compensation.
Yeah.
All right. Is there a motion? Move to approve a common vicular's license for Driftway Convenience Store located at 48 New Driftway, Situate, Mass. 02066, for operating hours of 7:00 AM till 10:00 PM, seven days a week, pending Board of Health approval, and a copy of the workers' compensation, and pending Planning Board approval.
Second. No, so moved, so moved.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Ms. Curran. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Tibbetts, thank you very much, and we wish you well.
I need that.
Thank you. All right, so, it takes the 7:30 off. Now we're moving on to a discussion, new catering service, The Black Apron. Is Lauren Rankhul? Hi there. Come on down.
She just popped in.
If you don't mind. I'm running just a few minutes late here. Did I skip something?
I don't think so.
No.
No, because we did the pizza already.
All right, so...
Hello.
Hi.
So, you're looking for catering, to be on the catering list?
Correct.
And, just get to the site here.
It's, what page is that? Sorry, we jumped around a little because we were running ahead.
You did certified, so that's important, okay. Again, as you know, that's the most important thing that we're concerned about. And we've never had, knock on wood, I don't think, any issues, so that's good. And I don't see any that you have, so that's good. All right, questions from the board? And with you is...
This is just our support. We work together all the time.
I'm giving you five, five minutes of time.
She came in late. I was like, let me get in there.
You're welcome to come.
Actually, I've got a nice referral here from Jen.
Yes.
I'm very familiar with, so...
Good.
She's great.
I have no questions.
Can you just give a little bit, what are you doing? Give a little overview of your experience and what you're doing.
Sure, so I've been in the business for ever and a day. Been in restaurants, and doing private parties as well. And I work for the hospitable hostess as the number one person for the last few years. And so, when Jen decided to close her doors, I decided to open mine. And so, I always say, we let the guests be, we let the hosts be a guest at their own party. So we go in, and we do all the setup, the serving, the cleanup, and they get to enjoy their guests.
So explain the liquor component of it.
Yeah, so if there's a bartender there, they have to be tip certified, and they just...
And you provide them?
Correct. So I do service and bartenders. They're all tip certified, and they do that separately, so that's on there.
But you certify that they are before they come and work for you?
Correct, absolutely.
And you're tip certified?
Yes.
And are you at, who's at the events? Is there always like a manager at the event that is...
There's always a lead person at the event, and they're always tip certified.
I've used you, so I know, but I just wanted to...
I was gonna say, I thought it was you.
And where are you gonna be operating out of, your kitchen and...
No, we don't do any of the catering end of it. We just do the serving. We work with catering.
Oh, so you're the coordinator?
We're gonna have to separate from each other.
I know, I'm sorry. Give me a second. So we just do that. We don't do any of that end.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, I was just gonna say, how long did you work for, um...
Jen?
Yeah, for Jen.
For a little over three years.
Yeah, so you're familiar with the area?
I was her lead person, so yes.
And where you, are you working out of an establishment? Do you have a...
Just out of my home.
Okay.
Yes.
Great.
Motion?
Motion, please.
Move to approve The Black Apron as a caterer for our recommended caterer list, as provided on the Town of Situate website.
Seconded by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Harris. Any questions from the audience? Say none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ladies, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the 8 o'clock discussion vote, Irish Book Collection, Situate Town Library and Monument on Easter Rising, John Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan, how are you? We're running a little bit behind, so apologize.
No, 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 that's fine.
Not too bad for us, really.
Can I hear for one quick second?
Yeah.
I just got a text that the Bruins are winning 2-0.
I'm pretty sure our town administration could have told us.
Jim, you're supposed to be keeping this up to date here. Are you watching the game?
Slacking over there.
The text was from Jim.
Text was for me, personally.
I didn't wanna throw him under the bus.
I'd be good over here.
6 o'clock.
What is it, 2-1?
2-1 after, 2-0 after 1.
2-0?
Yes.
The Bruins.
I know. You can all switch back to cable now.
I'll give you the floor, Mr. Sullivan.
No, 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 thank you, thank you. First, as far as the library, I know the library was part of the agenda, but it's my understanding in subsequent conversations, that that matter is going to be going before the library trustees. Just by way of background, it's something that I have appeared in front of the board for before, the idea of having a designated Irish collection of literature and books in the Situate Library, particularly since we expanded, there's a lot more room. And part of the reason for that is obviously, there's a great level of interest in Irish heritage and culture that's really expanded tremendously, just in the past five years. And also, interestingly enough, I'm a member of the Ancient Order of Hibernians, I think you know, the Plymouth Division. And we helped coordinate and set up the collection that is in existence in the Plymouth Library back around 1990. I actually was fortunate to participate in that. I just spoke to the librarians at the time, and the director of the library, Jennifer Harris, happens to know Ms. Finney, and so I've sought some input from her. But I'll be appearing, and I'm hoping some other people who are interested will be appearing in front of the trustees on that topic. Piggybacking on that, you have all seen, in the last several years, the interest in our heritage and our culture, particularly as it relates to the town of Situate. And what has happened, really, is that our town has been placed on the map in a way that I don't think any of us would have envisioned. The idea that a reporter for an international newspaper would fly up from Washington DC and do an article, and have Jim's picture front and center, by the way, would do an article about our town and our heritage, was really rather extraordinary. And then, also, to see these folks from West Cork and the Sister City group, and you all had the chance to interact with these extraordinary people, and feel the bond that's mutual. And the fact that this has been building up and building up is really a tribute to our town. Now, also, we bear the distinction that no other city or town in Massachusetts or in the United States has, which is, we have the greatest percentage of Irish per capita of any city or town in the United States. And it's an opportunity we have to celebrate that, and to, again, draw the attention, not just of the South Shore, but Massachusetts, and Ireland, to this little corner of the world. We've had a Easter Rising commemoration each year for the last four years. And we are one of the only cities or towns to do it in Massachusetts. And those of you who have been there, who have witnessed it, it's a moving ceremony. And it's a, an honoring of this pivotal event in Irish history that coincidentally happened April 24th, 1916. And this year, once again, we're going to be having a commemoration. We're honored to have the Consul General of Ireland, Fanula Quinlan, who's going to be there, as is the State President of the Ancient Order of Hibernians, Paul Hogan, who's traveling out. I think I gave, I gave a couple of copies of the program to you to take a look at. We only had a few. There'll be more on that event. And I also gave a copy of the proclamation. And what we're proposing to do is to have a granite monument with these words written on it, engraved in granite, and it would be placed ideally on the piece of land as you face the bandstand, from the Cold Parkway, just to the left of the bandstand. The footprint of the monument would be roughly five feet by one foot, two inches. That's all that's necessary. The size of the monument would be about six feet in height, four feet in width, and about eight inches in thickness. And it would be of granite, and this would all be privately funded. What is interesting is, from the first time that we had this commemoration, people have approached me, and I think have approached some other people in this town, about the idea of making a permanent monument. And it would be something that would be there forever, and would also let visitors to our town know that we're also honoring this event. One of my neighbors, Lyle Nyberg, said to me, he said, you know, John, he said, the only thing, really, that we have in this town that people can access is the Irish Mossing Museum. And that's open sporadically. And so, let's say, somebody read the Irish Times article, comes to Boston to visit family, but wants to come to Situate. What is there for that person to see or do? And unlike Cohasset, which has the magnificent Celtic crossing in the cemetery to honor the shipwreck, the 99 men, women, and children who drowned for the brig St. John, in Situate, all we have is the Mossing Museum. all we have is the Mossing Museum. And that is great, and it's fascinating, and I know the folks from West Cork were very impressed with it, and particularly Peter McHeagan's talk, who was himself a mossler when he was younger. But this would be an opportunity for our town to honor this event, as we have honored and celebrated it. So, that's what is before you today. Any questions?
Karen?
Tell me again exactly where you're thinking of the placement.
As you face the bandstand from the Parkway, there's grass to the left, to the left and to the right, this, there's a space just to the left, there's actually quite a bit of land. And I know there had been some concern about the issue of flooding, but that's one section that does not flood, because it, the land actually slopes down to Rocco's and the CBS. So that section is something that would not flood. So that was the area that I was looking in. The reason for the placement there is because it has been the bandstand that we've utilized to have this commemoration since we did it for the first time in 2016.
And it's gonna be carved, John?
It'll be carved out of granite. I've contacted Milton Monument Company. Oh, a couple of other things I meant to say, too. The WGBH interviewed folks from our town, because they were interested in how our heritage was celebrated in Situate. And that was broadcast everywhere. And then Seamus Mulligan, who does a radio program, A Feast of Irish Music, he is coming on this Sunday, he's going to record part of this event, and he's going to be playing it over his radio program. And he draws from all throughout the New England region. So there is a great level of interest in our town, and I think it's great if we can keep that going. Sorry.
That's all right, that was all.
No, I think it's a great idea, I was concerned about the flooding a little bit. So, but I would imagine that we would have to see some drawings first before there's like a final approval, right? Because this is still really in concept, right, John?
Well, I've met with the people at Milton Monument Company, and they, I can probably have them draw a schematic or something to that effect. But the most important part of it is obviously is the language that's going to be engraved on the stone, and that's why I wanted...
Is it this entire document?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah, except the footnote.
You leave that out. It may be hard to hammer in there.
Yeah, but just by way of history, the first time this was read aloud was on April 24th, in front of the General Post Office in Dublin City. And that was the headquarters of the Irish Provisional Government. And Horrigan Pierce, who was writing this document, stood out in front of the GPO and read it, and that was the first time it was read. And it's a powerful document, Irish men and Irish women. This was a time when women did not have the right to vote, and Ireland was one of the first countries to do that. And in this document, they are very clear that not only men will vote, but women will vote. So it was, in many ways, a rather extraordinary piece of work.
I was just gonna comment to Mara's concern, if they carve it, would they install it? And they can install it on a base that it wouldn't go anywhere, Mara. My biggest concern is it couldn't be, make it so it couldn't be tipped over.
No, it's going to be, it's going to have substantial weight to it. And the base, the actual width of the stone is four feet, the base is five feet. So, yeah, it's not going anywhere.
Tony, Brickwater. One question, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Would there be something added either in the back or a plaque or something that would explain why this is there? You know, like this was placed by the West Cork Association and, you know, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it's out of context if it's sitting in a Situate harbor.
Okay, I mean, I think, it's a great question, and I think I, one of the best things to do is to again reiterate that this stone is being placed here because we are the most Irish town in America, and it is important that we honor our heritage.
Right, so maybe we do an explainer plaque or something?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, on the other side.
Yeah, somewhere in the incorporated. But I think Mara's right, the final, we should definitely see the mockup to...
That's not a problem.
The concept, I think, is really wonderful, and builds on the West Cork's work on the Irish Trail, or what's it, I forget what it's called, Irish Trail.
Sexual Irish Heritage.
I knew you would have that name. I think it just adds to that and just supports all of the work that has been done on that.
Tony?
Nothing.
An Italian joke over here. Careful. Lillian Sweeney is my grandmother. So, have you talked to the Historical Society at all to get their input on it? And I think it's a great idea, but have you gotten their endorsement or...
Short answer is, you know, frankly, Tony, I didn't think of approaching them. I could certainly talk to, say, Bob Chesia.
Yeah, Doug Smith, I don't know who's...
Well, Society.
Kind of, I mean, I, you know, it'd just be nice to get something from them saying, yes, we support this as well.
Sure.
I doubt that they would have anything.
Yeah.
And then, we just passed a article to clean up that area, and I know, Lorraine, you were instrumental in that. What, is there anything planned for that area that he, that they're talking about putting that, or is that still...
We wouldn't impede on any plans.
Okay, so none of the benches are going there, and it's...
No, we could work together.
Okay.
Yeah, what, I was gonna, curious on the timing of...
We just gotta disperse it off the ground.
Yeah, so probably not till next summer.
I would, I'm hoping for the fall.
Okay, I'll be sure.
Any other questions?
No.
Any questions or observations?
Yes.
That's why I have to say I'm Irish, so that's, put that out there.
And your name.
Name and address.
Not Cuxtis, go on, but I just have one just thought on this, because I'm sitting here thinking, why...
I need it for the record, name and address.
Jill Cuxtis.
And the dress, Sheila.
Nine seven eight.
Thank you. Now you're official.
Okay, the heritage of Situate, I thought was like Men of Kent in England. And the Easter uprising is actually the Irish against the English, correct? So, I'm wondering why there would be a statue in the harbour that would commemorate something that happened in Ireland that had pitted two groups together, one of which is actually the real heritage of Situate, the United Americans. And I say that as a risk of really ticking some people off, but I'm just sitting back here thinking, why would we have that in the harbour? Why would we have something about the Easter uprising in the harbour? Why would we have something that says, you know, we are the most Irish, you know, populated town? I'm just, I'm having a really hard time with it, and I'm thinking that we need to think about that. This is not a battle that happened here, this is a battle that happened in Ireland. And it pitted really what were the founders besides Native Americans of Situate, which were the English. So, I don't know, I mean, I'm sorry, just to bring that up, but it just isn't sitting right with me, and I think we need to think about that. I'm not saying there shouldn't be something that says, Situate happens to be, at this point in our history, the most Irish town, but we may not be in a hundred years. And we certainly weren't 300 years ago. So I think we need to think about this a little bit. And again, I say this at the risk of really ticking off some people, but I think we need to take a step back and think about, why would we be doing that?
Thank you.
Any other, yes, hold right behind you, Jack.
I support this proposal entirely and without condition. I was just struck by the comment of the previous speaker, maybe we could remove all the references to the Men of Kent and neutralize the town and make it like, you know, a clinical lab with no texture or color. I think we can celebrate more than one element of our history, and I think this is a great way to do it for the Irish.
Thank you.
James, that's current means for the drive, and I just want to say you're braver than I am, because I was gonna get up first, but... Half my grandparents came from Ireland, and I grew up in South Boston, so I do have some claim to some Irish heritage. But my concern is that we are emphasizing only our Irish heritage in this town, and we do it with St. Patrick's Day, we do it with having a bouncy house, things that don't even really represent what Irish heritage is all about. This is talking about a singular event that had great repercussions, but I agree, it didn't happen here. So, I want to be careful, I'm not gonna say that I'm against this, but I'm concerned that somehow I don't give me pay enough attention to the non-Irish immigrants and the non-Irish descendants who are in this town. And when we say that with the most Irish town in the country, we don't have the most people who came from Ireland living here right now. We're talking about people who are second generation, third generation, fourth generation. When do you stop being Irish, you're just an American?
Any other comments, anybody?
I mean, I would just say, no one's stopping any other group from symbolizing anything that's important to them in the town either. You know, there's people in this town that take their heritage very seriously and are very devoted to it, and I don't think that you should penalize them for wanting to do that. And I think if there was, you know, an Italian group that wanted to come up and put something somewhere as well, that they would be just as welcome to do that also. So, I understand your point, unfortunately, during that time of history, as someone else mentioned, there were battles all over the place for very good things, and that's what I think this group of people feel that this was, just like the Fourth of July, just like the 19th of April in Lexington, you know, we celebrate a lot of things that good things became from. So, I'm not against it, I know your group has thought about this a lot, and it's important to you, and, you know, Irish heritage is important to a large people in town, and, you know, I think anyone else that feels passionate about some other area, whether it's the Men of Kent or some other thing, should pursue that as well. So, you know, I understand your point, it doesn't resonate with me as much, I see more of the positive from it than the negative from it, and I encourage anybody to pursue whatever they're passionate about and go down that path.
Thank you. I really appreciate those comments, because it just made me think a little bit more in combining that with Karen's contextual comment. You know, it does kind of seem like it might be out of place if it's not brought into context, right? So why, why are we putting there? It might help answer some of those questions. So if we do support this, I think it will be important not just to have the Easter Rising proclamation engraved on it, but, you know, maybe it's an opportunity for us to also celebrate that it's the West Cork Sister City. That's really why we're doing it, right? Like, we're really not doing it because of the Easter Rising, we're doing it because we're honoring our relationship as a sister city. I just think it needs to be combined. Like, I think, to provide some context for those who are just gonna walk up and see the proclamation there.
I want to clarify, I'm not coming before this board as a member of the West Cork Sister City Group, I'm doing this as an individual. So I am a member of the West Cork Group, and that is an important component to our town, but I am not doing that in that capacity.
So I guess I would like to know if they support it as well, then, I didn't understand that. So, here, opened up a whole new book of...
No, that's a legitimate question.
Before we do, I haven't said anything, I just want to say that to Sheila's point, to Jack's point, I can understand, you know, the context that Karen has raised as far as like, all of a sudden, why it's there. Clearly, there's a connection this time, this point in time, that yes, there are more Irish Americans here than anywhere else in the country. We've engaged as a town into a twinning, if you will, or a sister city like we did with France, souci en brie, but now we're doing it with County, West Cork County. And so it puts it into context in trying to develop that kind of familiarity, I guess you could say, but to the point of the proclamation itself, what I find is, it's very similar to declarations, I think Siobhan had mentioned, like the Declaration of Independence, 1776, you could probably say, maybe to some degree, Gettysburg Address by Lincoln or Constitution in its own way. And it's a very more modern 20th century approach. So it speaks more to the villages of just people individually, whether you're in Ireland or whether you're here, whether you're elsewhere in the world, and I think that's a very poignant and very powerful proclamation to at least describe that. So that's how I'm looking at it, and how I perceive it, I think it's a, it would be a very unique aspect that I think would benefit just not only the people who are Irish, I think it benefits the town as a whole with our relationship with West Cork County, but so that's how I'm looking at it. I'll turn it over to the Chair of the Committee, Brenda O'Connor.
Yes, I'm Brenda O'Connor, Royal Court Road, and Chair of the Situate by the Mark Sister City Committee. We have not taken any official vote on whether to support this or not, but there is an overwhelming consensus of the group that, yes, we applaud any effort to celebrate that. The reason that we declared the most Irish town in America is according to the 2010 United States Census, 47.5% of population claims Irish birth or Irish heritage, and you're right, some of them are several generations removed, and they are considered Irish by the Irish, a part of the diaspora. There is a great effort on their part to serve the diaspora worldwide. One reason, and aside also, is the man who raised the flag over the General Post Office as that proclamation was being read was from Skibbering, which is in West Cork. So, he was, remember just this week, at a ceremony in Skibbering. But it is, the declaration, the proclamation in Ireland is honored not for just beginning the movement towards independence in Ireland, which followed our, we were the first colony of England to go for independence. Ireland was their crown jewel, it was the next door neighbor, and they really wanted to hold on to that very much. And once Ireland went for independence, that was the beginning of the fall of the British Empire. So it is significant historically for that. But the words, that all would be fine, it's the words in the proclamation, and the recognition, as John said, of human rights, that is something that we need to remind ourselves of. It's not just the United States of America that does that, there are many places worldwide that do that. And the Declaration of Independence in Ireland, which is just celebrating its 100th birthday, was signed in January of 1919, follows our Declaration of Independence. There is an intertwining of ideas from the Enlightenment in Ireland to the United States and from the United States back. So there is quite a significance there. But also, I would like to say, as somebody who's submitted Situate from when I was three months old, and have lived here year round for over 40 years, I would like every group in Situate to be celebrated. I can remember, there was a family, a Cape Verdean family that had a farm on the dirt way, that taught my mother how to cook some vegetables, that I still use those recipes. And I would love to say, twinning in, with Cape Verde in the town, and so much more. And I think of us as perhaps the first, we are doing this, but we are not going to be the last, and I just think that this is a beginning.
Thank you. Any other? So, at this point, then, is it fair to say that we at least would like to have you come back, then, John, with more of a definitive...
I'll have the language on the back, subject to editorializing and adjustment. And also, I'll try to have a schematic, so you can have an idea what it would look like.
John, if you could get, just the comments from the Historical Society, Historical Commission also, I'd be interested to hear what their thought is on it as well.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
I think if he's gonna come back, he should also, if we're gonna pursue the explanation plaque, have some sort of wording for that.
No, I'd have that language. No, I'd have that language. I'd have that language, but I understand that even if I presented it to the board the next time you meet, you may want to adjust it, and it's not written in stone, so...
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Thanks, John.
May 7th.
May 7th.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to a discussion vote, outdoor entertainment permit for June 1st at 2931 Gannett Road, and here we, it's Peter and Andrea, but it's Lauren, actually, McCarthy. So, Lauren's here, Lauren, good evening.
I'm here.
Come on, have a seat, I'm going to have to explain, I'm going to have to recuse myself because I have dealt with Laura on personal matters, so, although I feel I could vote on it because it's pretty straightforward.
I know, seriously.
Is it the McCarthy one?
Yes, it is, so I'll turn the gavel over to...
Madam Vice Chair?
Vice Chair, all right. I'll go for that.
He just wants to take a break.
Yeah, no. Okay, so can you tell us a little bit about your event on June 1st?
My daughter is marrying this gentleman right here.
Oh.
It'd be from 4:00 to 11:00.
Okay. 4:00 to 11:00, Gannett Road, private party with a DJ, and I think I saw that you do have a Butters...
Yes, I notified every one of them.
Okay, okay, great, all right. And then, anybody have any other questions?
That's my only concern.
Yeah?
They know about it.
They do, and they've all given me the...
11:00 is pretty standard time.
What day of the week?
Is that a Friday night?
Saturday.
Saturday night, okay.
Motion?
Sure.
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Peter and Lauren McCarthy from 2931 Gannett Road for a private party with a DJ on 6/119 from 4:00 PM until 11:00 PM.
Second.
Movement, Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All opposed? I should have actually asked, is there anybody in the audience that was opposed to this?
She's rusty.
Okay, I know, I apologize, but there doesn't seem to be any, so I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thanks, have fun.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice to come with his mother.
All right.
Keep going.
Yeah, don't tell John.
Jennifer Sheen?
So, let's see, we'll let him come back? Maybe.
Someone here for the block party?
So, somebody here for the block party, Conslay, is it Conslay?
Yes.
Lane?
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Great.
Just your name and address for the record.
Jennifer Sheen, 12 Conslay Lane.
Hi, Jennifer.
Hi.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, block party, that's awesome, are we invited?
No, 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 it's debatable, if I get the permit, maybe.
Oh, wait a minute.
Quite a pro quo there, huh?
If I don't get a permit, I don't have a party, right?
I have to say, you know, having the block parties are great, when we moved into our neighborhood, somebody on Seaview decided to do it, and they brought, at that time, an ice cream truck and like a food truck, but this goes back like 15 years ago, which is so nice, get to meet a lot of your neighbors, hang out, so, that's a great, that's a great thing to do.
Yeah, yeah, it's primarily to celebrate my dad's 78th birthday. We've lived in the neighborhood since 75, so, so we pretty much know everybody unless I've lived in recently.
And I guess I even notified the Aldland neighbors and everybody, they understand it, and hopefully they're all attending.
Most, yeah.
Questions from the board?
Just as long as the fire department knows they can't get down that way, if they're needed, they're just going the other way, and the chief's sitting right behind you, so...
The other side, there you go.
I'll be quiet.
So, I'll have an agent right there.
Much problem he has with the application depends on...
For a block party, she probably does have to get that reviewed, right?
Yeah, you probably...
From the police and the fire, because it's not checked off.
You should probably just make sure you touch base with the fire department.
Pending police and fire.
In case they need to get in there for any reason.
I thought about that application, do I take that to them? We'll forward it to them. Okay.
So, we'll pending, we'll prove it, pending it, so that you have it, it's just the thought, just make sure, because if something happens and they're trying to get down, that's all, that's the major, that's the concern.
So, I'll just touch base with the safety complex, then?
Sure, we'll do it.
One-stop shop.
Door fire.
We'll do it.
Okay, so I don't, I'm just wondering what my responsibility, other than partying. I'll give you the...
She's the boss, she's the boss, she'll tell you.
Now, you really want to go.
I'm so going to this party.
I already checked out the fire chiefs.
We're having a DJ, but it's in the middle of the day from...
11 to 3?
Yeah.
So...
It's really 11 to 2, we're just giving a buffer, I mean...
Breakdown.
Yeah.
Setup. And is setup okay from 11?
Yeah.
Good.
Motion?
Please.
Move to approve closing, how do you say those street again?
Conslay.
You said it better than she did.
I didn't ask her, so I say Conslay.
Conslay, okay, we'll go with that. Conslay Lane, for a block party on June 29, 2019, from 11:00 AM until 3:00 PM.
Motion by Ms. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
It's an Irish street name, by the way.
That's why we're... We're really Italians. But we have one more, we have to do the outdoor entertainment, one moment.
Hold on, we got one more, we got a...
Do you want to add pending approval from police and fire?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So amended?
All right, next motion.
And move to approve an outdoor entertainment permit for a block party at Conslay Lane on June 29, 2019, from 11:00 AM until 3:00 PM, pending police and fire approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Congrats, you're all set.
Happy birthday to your father.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks.
We need music, hard rock, hard, thank you.
Well, we got you that, so you're good.
I'll get in touch with you, Alex and Laura. Okay.
All right, so let's move on to the special events permit for Situate farmers. John, how are you? Just introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is John Bellburne, I live at 32 First Parish Road, down the street here, and I also work at Holly Hill Farm in Cohasset, a nonprofit organic educational farm, and through nice discussions with Ms. Devon and Mr. Boudreaux, I'd like to propose on the heels and on the wings of Mark and Liz Flaherty, who've been running the Situate Farmers Market for many years, to move the Situate Farmers Market, the outdoor seasonal market, from St. Mary's parking lot to a location suggested, which is adjacent north of Town Hall on the green space where the police station used to be, running from mid-June until mid-October, on Wednesdays, 3:00 to 7:00 PM.
Same time, just different location?
Well, it's gone back and forth between 3:00 and 7:00, and 2:00 and 6:00, and we thought with school traffic and such, there'd be one overlap on a Wednesday in June if we start on the 12th, not the second Wednesday of the market, which would be the 19th, if school's out on the 18th, barring freak snowstorms. And then, there'd be some overlap in September, October, but it would run a little shorter in those autumn months, autumn evenings, when the sun goes down a little earlier. So, 3:00 to 7:00 PM is the short answer.
The grass over there, is that...
Yeah, we talked about it in the fall, I think.
Yep, recently, late fall.
Yeah, so the grass hasn't really started coming in yet, it's kind of a sponsor.
Put them like across, on the other side of the, on the green space in front of it?
They could be out front, yeah.
Perfect.
Front might be a better spot.
Close to 3A?
Yeah, just on this other side of the parking lot.
The drive thru.
But just temporarily, just temporarily until this fills in finally, I guess.
Okay.
That's all.
Is there a danger concern with proximity to 3A?
Yeah. We have the truck touching out there with all the kids and everybody running around, and I even...
On the green space you're suggesting, Mr. Dennehy?
Well, I was thinking, I was thinking like just across, on the other side of the offices, there's the drive and parking.
There's plenty of space there.
And putting on the other side, that's where they do the touches truck.
Okay, so where the sign is, it says Shipshape Day.
Yeah, in the town that the historical or bicentennial, in between there, there's a lot of space between.
Yeah.
Just temporarily until that fills in, otherwise, you could go out back here, just that you're not going to have the visibility that I think you want.
Well, not so much out back, but more to where the police station was.
Well, that's...
Once the grass takes.
Then you're there.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Maybe you could work on that, John.
Sorry?
You could work on getting that grass to grow.
Sure, well, I mean, garden beds is part two of the police station, right? Community garden beds out there.
Well, long-term, I have to say, what would be nice is, I'm not sure whether, you know, it can happen, but obviously, it'd be nice to have some kind of little structure out there, you know, long-term for...
For the end of some kind?
For a farmer's market going forward.
Yes, that'd be great.
So you have, not just, you know, your tents, but I mean, I think it's a great location, nothing wrong with Front Street or St. Mary's Parking Lot, but...
Correct, they're very hospitable at St. Mary's.
This might be more visible, which might be better.
Yeah, that was sort of a drive-by market, and I realize 3A is drive-by, but this could be destination, taking a page from Cohasset and Marshfield where it's on a green space.
I think so too, makes sense.
Where would the vendors park?
They'd drop off, have them park over the new spots over here.
Yeah, and there are many new spots, over 30, I've got, upon my school drop-offs.
Oh, in the back, over there.
Back here, as well as the side, facing the new gates.
The summer's bad.
Once I get the school students out of that parking that they're not supposed to be.
So, I'd be a, sort of a, propose to be a market manager, helping to facilitate, I
would be bringing produce that we would sell as well, from Holly Hill Farm, each vendor would complete a vendor application, which they've been doing for years, and anywhere from 10 to 12 vendors, and live music was also discussed, the possible plug-in.
That's up to them.
Plug-in to the building here.
I...
Or pure acoustic.
Wednesday, I, I don't know how the board feels, I have no problems with that, maybe they close at what, 4:30 off Town Hall, close at 4:30 weekdays?
Wednesday, 4:45.
4:45, only depending on the music, if it's acoustic, I bet you it's kind of nice if it's more amplified, then I'd be like, you might want to wait until 4:45.
Sure, so keep it low.
Otherwise, Jim's going to be opening the window, listening to music.
I don't have any windows in the front, my windows open on the side.
Well, when they're over there, you're going to hear it.
I'm sure they would take requests.
Holler in out the window.
That's what I'm thinking, that's what. What's the board feel?
So, I think I'm the only one here, just listening to everybody, I think this is a terrible idea, because of traffic, because of the school, you know, yeah, school gets out at 2:00, but you've got sports out there, and a lot of, we have traffic problems there to begin with, never mind having people walking around in a farmer's market, so I was, is there a reason why you want to move away from St. Mary's? I just think it's a nice, safe spot, it encourages business not only for you as a farmer's market, but also drives business into the harbor, people can go for a nice walk, I don't see that experience here, so I'm missing something.
Right, so, several reasons for a request to move from there is that it was not a place to come and linger, not a place to stay and shop, people would come in and out, and attendance has been very, very low, it's been a very poorly attended market. Vendors weren't staying, and customers were not staying and lingering and making an hour out of it, or a day out of it. So, we'd like to create a spot, as I've seen other farmer's markets successfully, where people come and stay and shop, and maybe stop and have a bite to eat and linger, and with the traffic that you mentioned here, and the people here, that could be encouraging to get some teens and others to linger after school, and maybe come to market on the June or those autumn days. So, I've just seen low attendance at the St. Mary's Parking Lot, on the blacktop there, just not a place, especially in the hot summer days, for anybody to want to stay long or even to go there. And people going to the harbor, yes, there were some walkers by who didn't linger to shop, they were on their walk to Peggity or back, or into the harbor or back, and others were doing their business in the harbor by car and leaving by car, and getting what they needed in the harbor, but not thinking of the farmer's market as a place to get vegetables or produce, or soaps, or jams, or things, because they were doing their errands.
And did we rule out the common because of parking, crossing over?
Yeah, there's just no parking down there.
I'm thinking he's talking about green space, you know, that, like that...
Oh, I think the common would be great, we'd have to reconsider the whole parking thing, I know Cohasset does that, and they have a, they block off areas for parking, that's a consideration. Another thought was the library, Jess Finney, perhaps she was here earlier, discussing her live music, I would love to go to the library, it was not overly encouraged a year ago when I brought that up, just because of potential building behind Central Park, but the library was a lovely considerations too, there's all the new green space there, parking's a little bit less, but it's another great destination, and if Jess Finney did present something about the live music...
That's one good thing about people.
At 6:00, right, that'd be nice to feed right into live music and have the market there, so I'm certainly not opposed to looking at other sites, the library has come to my mind as a possibility. I guess an overarching theme is green space.
Hmm.
And I understand your concerns about 3A and traffic.
Hmm.
I'm open to suggestions and...
What are your concerns about the library site? Do you have any concerns about the library site?
I mean, the only concern with the library site is, there's not a whole lot of parking, so you'd be competing with the library patrons for parking.
Right, or if you parked on the Central Park side, then it's sports.
I mean, I thought this was a good location because of the traffic, because of the amount of traffic that goes by, I thought briefly maybe up at front of the old gates, but we don't know what's going to be going on there, there is some green space up there, but...
That's a long term.
That would be nice, that's a long term, I was thinking the same thing.
Campus, but...
Yeah.
So, this just seemed, I was hoping this was going to have grown in, I thought that would be a perfect spot.
Well, let's talk about that, why wouldn't we do gates this summer? I mean, obviously, if it passes, are we going to be breaking ground right away?
Yeah, I think they're proposing...
You'd be starting probably late summer, early fall.
Okay, okay.
And you might be taking down the Seawing before that.
Right, okay, all right, so that's all I have.
So, you'd definitely be starting...
I think long-term that would be ideal.
I do too.
Sure, I love that spot, it's great, there's a party garden there at the Red School House.
Or work with the common and then...
How about North Situate, why don't we try and bring some people to North Situate?
It originally was there, in the MBTA Parking Lot, on the south side, I suppose, right, by the new DPA building, and I think there ran the similar problems of a parking lot destination for a market.
No green space there at all.
And that was back 10, 10 years ago.
Yeah, before we had a playground too.
True.
John, do you...
I'm associated with these stuff.
Do you spend much time at Cohasset or other ones?
Oh, yeah.
And why, why do they work, and why hasn't, and I don't care where you go, I just want to see it work, and make it safe.
I want to see it work too, and I want to see, provide business and traffic and enticement for the town.
It's all about the location.
It's about location, and I see Cohasset and Marshfield where I've been mostly, Hingham as well on Saturday mornings.
Hingham's in the bathing...
They're in the big parking lot, but they are, they have a lot of grass space...
That's true.
For gathering in a park area.
Right.
So, I've seen it work in Cohasset where they are overcrowded with people lingering and picnicking.
Parking's difficult there.
In fact, so much to the point of them not shopping as much, because they're just sitting around, a lot of the visitors there, but that's a good problem to have, is to have a lot of people.
I wish I had a simple solution for you, but...
I mean, there's parking, obviously, at, parking issues at the common, and what I call the old common on Stockbridge, that could be something to consider too.
What about the Driftway? That big green space that's to the left of, that's to the left of...
The Intel?
The launching?
The launching.
Yeah, there are a lot of nets or no...
There's no, was no parking.
Yeah, they get people parking on the Driftway, which would be problematic.
The problem is people here are going to park out here, in the front, I don't know if that's going to...
Yeah, I mean, one day, we can accommodate, you know, the town hall people, we'll just[1691.54] tell them, park out back, park over here.
We'll get more visibility. Maybe more people will come.
Yeah, I mean, it is. It is a move that we realize in a place where we already are. It's just we haven't really seen any traffic. And this is a chance also, and I know the farm I work for is in Cohasset, but you're supporting local businesses. There's a Jammer and Norwell. There's another, the other local businesses, soap makers, dog treat folks who are local to Situate who's who would benefit from from the visibility of being at a at a highly drawn, attractive farmer's market. It would be zero trash waste, you know, pack in, pack out.
I'm inclined to say, let's give it a try. I mean, we want to do something. We're gonna do something. Just I'm like, right now, it'd be great to see if you can get the flow or get the visibility and the traffic because if that happens and we just end up deciding to shift it to whether it's the library location or.
And people will follow.
People will follow.
Right.
And I think.
I'd welcome that.
That's a that's a thought. So if you can generate more traffic, that's the key.
Okay.
That's me. Other spots?
Motion or discussion, questions?
Ruth, you got any questions?
No.
What a motion.
Motion, please.
Who to approve a special event permit to John Bellborough for the Situate Farmer's Market, June second, two thousand nineteen, June twelfth, sorry, June twelfth, two thousand and nineteen through October twenty third, two thousand and nineteen, from three P M to seven P M.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by.
Second.
Ms. Canfield. All those in favor?
Hi.
John, thank you for doing this.
Good luck, John.
It's gonna be a good fun. And again, much thanks to Liz and Mark Flaherty and thank you, Mr. Fugro.
Other pieces to follow up with?
Uh, we'll get to it.
Thank you. So I know everybody's waiting to get into the next discussion about ambulance rates, but it's that was supposed to start at eight forty. It's five to nine. We've been sitting here since six. So I'm gonna take a ten minute break and then get started on John with Nancy. And then we're gonna go to the sewer comprehensive plan with Kevin and Will. And then my question to the board while we're taking a break about maybe pushing the discussion of the board selecting policies and procedures, one more meeting, but we put that on first at the next meeting so that we can discuss it because it's, I don't think we're gonna get everything in because then we have the ADA valuation transition contract, eighty four thousand that.
That'll be quick.
That'll be very quick. So I figured that would. So.
Is anyone here for that?
Oh, yes.
Two to one after two.
I was just gonna ask my next question. All right, good. We'll take a ten minute break and we'll react back, folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion vote ambulance rates. Chief Murphy's here and Nancy Hall. This is a pickup from our last discussion two weeks ago about the rates.
Highlights, thanks, John.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
So picking up from where we were two weeks ago.
So I'm gonna turn it over to the chief because he put together some cost estimates which the board was concerned with at the last meeting.
Yep.
Okay. So basically, over the last ten years, some of these are just estimates on the increase in the COLAs. Nancy can confirm. But if you look at the back two thousand nine, we run one ambulance and we're just getting started with the second ambulance. We had a class one and a class five. A class five is a non-transport ambulance. Since then, which is our captain's car. If somebody goes out of town, we want to have ALS equipment for paramedics that are in town, be able to provide care until a mutually ambulance comes. Now, we actually have three vehicles, one in each station. Aside from our three primary ambulances, we have three backup fire trucks and a captain's car that also have the Zalmontas on them. So all the equipment increased. So now if somebody's out of town with both ambulances are gone, we have every station has ALS equipment and paramedics to provide care until a mutually ambulance. So all the equipment we had to purchase for that, the never mind the paramedics, we have twenty four, actually, it was twenty two at the time. We have thirty four paramedics now. So we increased costs about ten grand a year for paramedic for for the COLA and their pay, but also increased training. Since two thousand nine, we had, we had, every two years you have to certify a paramedic. It was about forty eight hours of Con Ed. Now, we go by national standards, which it increased to about a hundred hours. So we doubled our training costs, doubled our training hours. If you look at our our cost with the increase in medics, we've gone from about twenty two thousand a year to seventy six, seventy eight thousand dollars a year. So long story short, just our training and the COLAs alone bring us above what we want to increase our annual spending by, which is a hundred and twenty thousand is the recommendation. So those alone, so the new increased requirements now in the ambulances, we have to have the electronic stretchers. They're forty thousand dollars a piece. We have to have the Zalmontas. The old ones were twenty thousand. The new ones are forty thousand. The Lucas machines, the CPR machines, they're fifteen thousand dollars a piece. We have three of them. And the CPAP machines, and those are the main things. There's a lot of others, you know, again, we have six vehicles equipped with ALS equipment, three primary ambulances and three secondary. So.
All equipped with all this equipment?
All this equipment, yeah. Well, the stretches aren't on the engines, but they do have those Zalmontas on there. They do. They don't have the Lucas machines because we haven't gotten that far yet. We just afforded. We got the ones with a grant. We got three for the primary ambulances. But all the the engines now have IV ALS bags. They have paramedics on them. So as we increase the paramedics, we have that capability now to increase the service to all of our apparatus that are out there and running two full-time ambulances now compared to one. We're running two frontline twenty four seven. So you have more fuel costs, more equipment cost, supplies, vehicle maintenance, putting more miles in these vehicles. So the all these costs aside from the just the cost of the paramedics and the cost of the training will far exceed what we're asking to increase the increase the the cost by, which just provides us just below the average of the towns that Nancy stated last time. So we're just trying to make sure that, you know, the increased cost. And the other thing is, the care right now that we're giving is much better than it was ten years ago. Again, we have all the engines with all this equipment on it. We have three ambulances that are that are ready to go. We have two full-time ambulances twenty four seven. So we've got increased costs, but our service is outstanding and it's 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 provides much better service to the town of Situate, but there are more costs. And the insurance will offset this. The deductibles are non-insured. I think it was over twenty six thousand dollars that the town gets back a year. That includes the deductibles from people's insurance, according to Comstar. It's not just people that don't have insurance, but it also includes those deductibles. So twenty six thousand out of about nine hundred and forty three thousand is a small number. And I think we have, I think, a pretty liberal program that if somebody has a hardship with a deductible or to pay their insurance bill if they don't have insurance, we just ask them to provide the simple form that Comstar provides us with. We have them fill it out and they say they have a hardship due to due to financial or whatever it is. And I think we've always been pretty, pretty flexible to work with them on that, whether it's a payment plan or just, you know, letting them letting them go without paying if they can't afford to.
Also, you have a presentation in front of you. I just want to move you to, I told the board I would bring them the Medicare reimbursement rates, just so you could see what the federal government was doing on the reimbursement rates. It's it's all over the place. I gave you eight years worth of data. It's anywhere from a negative increase to upwards. I think the highest is two point four eight. And for fiscal for calendar two thousand nineteen, they increased them about two point three percent. I took the Situate rates, the bundled recommendation, which is not changing the rates, just making them bundled, and took them upwards if you applied the Medicare reimbursement rates, what those percentage increases were, just to show you what would have happened with our rates with the same types of changes. And then the same thing with the Consumer Price Index, the Consumer Price Index for wage earners in the Boston area from November two thousand eleven through two thousand nineteen, found out what those increases were and then did the same thing and applied those to the rates. And then because it's just not enough fun to look at all those charts, I put it in a comparison format. So you have what our current rates are, which would be bundled. The Medicare rate, what two thousand nineteen would be if you had moved every year with the Medicare percentage increase, not the Medicare rate percentage increase that Medicare went up. Same thing with the CPIW and then what we originally requested, so that you have even more options to look at than you did at our last meeting because it's more fun at this time of night to look at more options.
And more numbers.
More numbers. Just to get a sense if what we're requesting was reasonable, not reasonable, or in the ballpark. And I think for the most part, it's reasonable. The ALS two in both instances, if we'd gone up by either one of those percentage increases, the ALS two would be higher than we are now. It also was looking at the ALS one and the BLS. So the BLS would be less than what was recommended, but it would be higher than our current rate. And the same thing with the ALS one. It would be higher than our current rate, not necessarily as high as what was requested. So that gave you some more options to look at if you didn't like the recommendation or you wanted something else to try to tie it to. So you have three items before you. One is to bundle the rates because that's how Medicare is currently billing us and what the the third party biller, Comstar, is currently doing. They're actually bundling our rates for us because that's the only way they can submit to Medicare. So we'd just like to adopt that structure. And most of our neighbors, as you saw before in that comparison chart, are at bundled rates. The second one would be to have discussion and consideration on some type of a rate increase. And the third would be consideration of perhaps mending the policy to tie it to some index index going forward. I did re-rank them based on the same number of the same communities that we looked at before, all of the different options. The original request are current rates as tied to the CPI and also as tied to the Medicare reimbursement percentages, just to see where you would fall if you adopted any one of the rate structures if you decided to make a change.
Nancy, is the Medicare column what Medicare charges or just what you increased it by their rate?
The latter. It's not what they charge. It's the percentage increase that they did year over year applied to our rates.
So the Medicare reimbursement is much less than that?
Yes, it is. It's on, I think it's on the very first.
So that's just a random number to to it has nothing to do with insurance coverage?
No, it's something based on how the federal government is increasing their reimbursement rates, so applying that same percentage.
To a much higher, to a higher number.
Correct. I do apologize. It is dry for this time of night.
So I ask a question.
Yeah.
The the bundled requested amount going forward, does that have a component of inflation in it?
No, they were just add literally adding up the numbers.
No, but going forward, if we were gonna pick that option, revisit?
You'd have to revisit it annually unless you adopted.
The CPI one.
Something to your policy.
Okay.
Such as number three.
Correct.
So number three is combined plus have a cost of living or a CPI?
Yeah, number one is to combine, to do bundle. Number two is any type of rate increase. And number three would be to tie it to an index going forward.
But yeah, tied to an index, but what would be the underlying? I'm gonna mind missing here.
Would mean you wouldn't have to take any action.
Either.
Oh, take or leave it the way it is and just.
The prior year, there would be the.
I guess my question is if you change the structure in which you charge, shouldn't there also be a CPI increase built into the formula? Or is that something that's just better revisit it?
I think you revisit it in the second section.
Okay.
Just bundling them alone just is for administrative ease of billing. And they're actually doing it already for the Medicare runs. And it doesn't change the pricing. They're already, we're already doing it, just we didn't realize we were doing it.
Okay.
Well, I think that answers my questions. This sheet that the chief just went over, I mean, our cost to train the paramedics keeps going up, which just seem to be getting farther behind. Their level of service keeps going up, I believe as well. I think they're much, as he said, much more advanced than they were twenty years ago. I'm satisfied with this. Answers my questions.
Which which which?
Which which?
Spit it out.
You're sitting right here.
Which rate are you in favor of? The bundled, the tying it to an index or?
There are three.
All three of those, I believe.
But you have to pick one.
You have to pick one, right?
So bundled is one thing. Which one of these increases you want is two? And then do you want to tie it to an index is three? So it increases in future years?
Yeah.
So I'm glad. Oh, go ahead, John.
No, I can't. I guess I don't understand it. So.
You could do the original request and then you could also say we want to tie it to an index every year going forward. So you really don't have to address this. It's going up by one, two percent a year just to keep up with your costs.
So it's it's three separate votes, completely up to the board whether they want to do any one of the three, all of the three. I think you know where we stand on the issue, but.
I'm set to do the bundled and vote the bundled based upon Medicare percentage, right? That's what I think.
The bundled, there is no rate increase in the bundled. It's just to make our rates bundled.
Just combining the mileage.
That's pretty much done.
That's the first one. The second is the rate.
Most of our rates are already gone to a bundled rate.
Okay.
That's now I get it.
It just bundles the fee for service and travel.
Doesn't do anything to address the shortfall.
There's no shortfall.
No, the original request is gonna probably get us about maybe two thirds of the shortfall, but it's gonna get us in the right direction. And then the third part is.
Is there a shortfall or not a shortfall?
Yeah, oh, yeah. I mean, just.
Seems like we're going backwards.
Just alone, the cost to pay the salary increases and the cost to train the medics alone will exceed what the original request did. I'm not even including the cost of the equipment, the cost of the machines, the cost of the, you know, the extra equipment on the trucks and all that, because all the costs of the on the on the apparatus, we can't travel, we can't transport by by fire engine, but we have that. That's all part of our treatment, our component to the ALS program, to EMS program. So it's six vehicles, even though we're just transporting with two.
I think what we're missing is that's a fixed cost. Irregardless of what we charge, the town is gonna pay that fee. That's that that is the fire department budget, whether we do zero trips or we do a thousand trips. That is what's gonna happen. So there's three things here. Bundling the fees is a no brainer. That's it has no impact on the on the user and it's just gonna help administratively. We are the only ones that decide whether we want this rate fee to go up or not, whether we want to go up by one of these three things that they're suggesting or anything else we want. It can go up one percent, it can go up a hundred percent. And then the last one is whether we want it to go up at a certain percent every year. So we don't have to talk about this anymore ever again.
Right.
You know, but the numbers that the fire department's budget has no impact on this. This money does not go to the fire department budget. This goes to free cash or other local receipt.
It supports the operation.
It operate, right. It supports the operating budget.
Because it's your seat.
Right. But it goes to whatever we want. And I'm not, I'm not opposed to raising the rates, but I'm not looking for another thing to raise for our town residents to have to pay more. If we're gonna raise the rates more, insurance is gonna cover it. Raise it up to whatever the limit that the insurance is gonna pay. But.
Can I interrupt? Are we leaving anything on the table?
You can hit to his exact point. So if you want to go to the top fifty bundling, which will bring more revenue, probably twice the revenue we're asking.
And not cost somebody out of their pocket more. Am I right?
Right. Depends on their insurance.
Depends on their insurance and the deductibles. So like I said, we're talking about twenty six thousand dollars that we take in from uninsured. Also, deductibles included, that people, if you pay, say ninety percent, the insurance pays in ten percent, they don't. And some people pay that, some people don't. We try to collect that, work with people. But there's hardship forms. If somebody says, comes to the town and says, listen, I'm having a hard time paying this deductible. I'm having a hard time paying this. We're very flexible. We work with them. They fill out an application. They give us the some information and typically that is blessed.
We get collections. We, our companies send letters. They make phone calls. They're collecting this money from whoever's on that list. That's what the company does. I know because they're doing it to me because my son had a trip and the insurance thing got screwed up or whatever. So it's an aggressive collection effort to people. And nowadays, your health insurance doesn't cover all of it. It just doesn't. So you get, you're gonna have to pay some part of that fee anyways. And again, if the insurance is gonna cover it, I got no problem. But if all of a sudden, we're gonna raise two hundred bucks to to somebody to get get an ambulance fee on top of the water rates, on top of the taxes, on top of the overheads, then I don't think it's something that I that I really want to go to. And it's very strange. I mean, look at the rankings. There's gotta be a lot of people that are charging a heck of a lot less because we're, the difference between our fee at nineteen fifty and seventeen fifty, two hundred bucks, which is ten percent, only moves us one spot in terms of the ranking. That seems.
What paid you on, Tony?
The rate options?
Yeah, I'm looking at that. I mean, this is the page that we've got it, you know, that they're proposing.
I think out of the twelve towns we're comparing to, I think this is gonna bring us close to seventh or eighth, even with our increase. And there's three other towns right now on that list that are looking to increase their rates.
Right. But whether we do the highest increase or the lowest increase, it only impacts it by one spot in most of the categories. So it's, so that just means there's a lot of diversity in what people are charging. It's not like there's a bunch of people charging eighteen hundred, eighteen twenty five, eighteen. So half the people are charging well, less than sixteen twenty one, which we charge now, you know.
Right.
Look at the BLS. The BLS is, we're a lot lower than most too.
So I, you know, I get it. You guys want money.
It's not going to my budget.
No, no, I know. That's why we get it. We have all the facts. We'll decide what we want to raise it. You know, you want more money coming in, but, you know, we all complain about raising fees for the buses at the school, fees for your kids to play a sport. You know, this is just another one of those that we're increasing.
Not really based on.
It's about ninety percent insurance, just guessing. So, I mean, this offsets some of the fees for buses or whatever else you want to use it for. But the majority, the vast majority of this money is coming from insurance.
I don't know that that's true. I don't know that that's true. Because our insurance is paying the same amount that it did last year as this year and we're raising the rates 200 bucks.
I think the overall rate.
I'm guessing, my insurance, my company probably says, "I'm going to pay $1,500, you're going to pay the rest." I'm guessing. And that's not, if we raise it 200, that's all going to me. My company's not going to say, "I'm going to pay 700 now" or 1,700 now.
A lot of that depends on your insurance plan.
Yeah.
Tony, if I discussed at the last meeting, I've taken an ambulance ride in the most expensive town on the list and I didn't pay a dime. I never saw a bill. And I have town insurance. So, I mean, it's so wildly diverse between what kind of plan you have. You could have a high deductible plan and you could take a medically required ambulance, you know, whatever, for whatever reason. And you're going to pay full freight because you have a $5,000 deductible. And you have to hit that before they kick in. It, it can be anything depending on your plan.
That's not quite right because all insurance companies pay the reasonable fee. So whatever they, whatever they deem as the reasonable fee for that service, they cover. And then you pay whatever's above and beyond that.
On a high deductible plan? You have to meet a threshold first of out of pocket.
Yeah, but usually they pay, they, the usual customary fee, they, is what they reimburse you for.
No.
And then you have to pay.
You're sure you have a deductible.
Right, and you have to pay typically a copay of something. You know, for emergency care, for ambulance of 500 bucks.
I mean, I think Nancy's, the diff, I mean, we're splitting hairs at this point, but the difference is that you have a high deductible, which a lot of people do now, and your ambulance ride costs $2,000 and your deductible's five, you're paying all of it.
Yes, but if you.
And that's what a lot of us do because rates are so high.
Right.
When you provide insurance.
That's a lot of people.
The only way I can save money for my employees is to raise the deductible.
Right, so then every dollar of this is going to.
Hit them.
Out of your pocket.
Hit them.
97% of the revenue we get is from insurance. 97%. So that's where the increase is. 97% of the increase we're asking is going to insurance and roughly 3% is not.
How do you get, I don't see how you get that. That's completely counterintuitive to what they just said.
So we collect, about 3% of the revenue we get out of, say, $950,000, we get about $26,000 a year from non-insured. It's 3% of the total of what we collect is, is non-insured. 97% is insured money.
Oh, but that doesn't, you don't know whose pocket it came out of though.
Yeah, it's the deduct.
Which means that.
If you have a high deductible plan, you got to pay all of it, you have to pay all of it.
Well, that's what we collect. They say about, over 40 people, we've collected $26,000 between the non-insured and the deductibles is what Comstat, unless they collected.
I don't, I don't know how that could be right. I don't know, how could that be right with what you just said about the deductibles?
Well, it could be different, but for the majority, we have them.
Insured, the difference is it's insured people versus non-insured people. It doesn't say where the money comes from.
So it comes from both. Comstat says the $26,000 is from insured people, deductibles and non-insured people. It was a total of 40.
It could be a little skewed in situ because we have a higher proportion of Medicare and Medicaid. That's why we have that big differential between what we bill and what we can collect. We bill out 2 million, we can only collect about a million. We can only collect about 50% of what we actually bill.
Right.
And those rates are going to go up. There's going to be more and more Medicare and Medicaid. So that's going to help, that's not going to, that's going to go against our, you know, our offsetting cost is going to increase as, as we get to the, we talked about, I think it's 2,030, over 60% of the people will be 60 years old. So I mean, those numbers aren't getting any better.
Well, how does the board feel? Seems like we're kind of.
Well, I would, I would vote for a rate increase, but I would do the, the 8% one.
Medicare based?
I was going to say, is that the?
Yeah, but that's even a made up number. It's, you know, it's. Yeah, it has nothing to do with Medicare other than the rate that they increase their stuff. It, it doesn't mean that it's covered. I, I mean, again, I'm just repeating myself, so.
Is that just the Medicare benchmark really?
It was the percentage that Medicare went up each year, year over year. So you can call it option C.
So on, on that particular line where it says mileage of 10% and that's just the number. So we're, are we voting the percentage or are we voting the actual dollar amount? Percentage?
But either. These, all these numbers mean, just pick what percent you want to raise the rates. 8%, 15%, 25%?
You can do a blanket rate percentage if you want. You don't have to do any of these. You can do anything that's in their wisdom decides what they want to do.
Medicare increases theirs annually?
Yes, every year they, they change. It didn't always go up, sometimes it went down.
Is that what their, the rate or?
I couldn't figure out what exactly they were tying it to and it wasn't consistent across the different services.
And I apologize, I wasn't here and I did not watch this particular discussion.
I do it every time I missed it.
I know you do. That's because you're so good. What is the reason that you want the ambulance rates increased?
Because the ambulance rates have not been adjusted since 2011, though our costs have risen.
In the 12 towns around us that we're comparing to, and even with the increases, we're going to be about eighth out of 12. So still below the average even with the recommendation, recommended increases. So if somebody comes in, and Hingham comes in here and we charge 1,200, Hingham's going to charge 1,700 for the same thing on mutual aid. So we're just trying to create some parity with our neighboring towns and what people are charging for the ambulance rates.
Thank you.
Well, anybody?
You might help a program that you're trying to do in town. Like I said, it doesn't affect my budget, but I'm just looking at what, what comparisons are from other departments, other chiefs' information, as Nancy has too, and it might help support another program in town where most of it's from insurance.
I don't know, I think wrapping my head around this, to me it makes more sense to, you know, if we're going to raise it, raise it based on the CPI because that's what the cost, I mean, you can pretty much, I mean, yes, there's training and, and things that impact it, but, you know, it, it makes no sense that it hasn't increased by CPI over, over time, which would be, you know, around 15 and a half percent, 15%. And then vote to tie it to CPI going forward. Does that make sense?
So you're saying to bring it right up to speed?
Bring it up to speed and then make sure that we don't get, keep falling into the hole again. I mean, it just seems.
It makes sense.
Logical to me. Or, or pick any of these, but we definitely need to tie to CPI going forward.
I agree to tying it.
I don't know, maybe somewhere in the middle, don't.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, but we need the, we need to be adjusting it every year.
Increase, yes, without us having to vote it.
Have this conversation. What if we increase it 8% this year and tie it to the CPI moving forward?
I would be fine with that.
Sounds good.
So moved. Mr. Chair, do you have an opinion?
All right, just discussion here. So let me get this straight. So you're looking to increase the rates that we have, the bundled mileage, ALS non-emergency, ALS number one, BLS, BLS emergency, the whole thing, by 8% starting May 1st, 2019, and then tying it going forward to the CPI index every year thereafter? Okay.
So moved.
Well, that's the discussion.
There's three motions.
So I'm just looking at the ranking just to see, because that's what you gave us. So we'll go from mileage, six will still remain six, I believe. From non, ALS non-emergency, ninth will go to seventh. From ALS one, we'll go from ninth ranking to seventh.
Yeah, we'll go to eighth.
Go to eighth.
Just to keep it simple, John, we only do emergency, we don't do non-emergency.
And then the BLS emergency will go from 13th to, 13th will still remain.
Same.
It'll still be the best deal in town.
ALS two will be eight to six, it'll go up to. And then specialty, I guess you go from eighth to six. So you're moving up two. All right.
Yeah, I mean, I just really wish we could get a sense for what insurance will pay. You know, on the emerg, if the BLS emergency, if insurance will pay $1,200, then I'd say raise it at $1,200.
We, unless we survey everyone in town and what their plans are, I don't think there's any way of really knowing that.
Well.
Or I guess you could.
There's three major carriers in the state.
Yeah. You could look at their rates.
All right. All those in favor of the motion proposed by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Harris? Or was it Ms. Canfield? I forgot.
Second.
It's Ms. Canfield. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those against? All right.
And that motion, was there a bundle?
Yes, make a motion to bundle the rates.
Motion by Mr. Nanyani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor? Aye.
Make a motion to raise the rates by the CPI index moving forward.
Wasn't that you and your motion?
Motion, I think that was, no, actually it was.
Was that in the?
It was in the original. He bundled his motion.
It was 8% and then to CPI, tied to CPI.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was that your motion or something, Ms. Canfield's?
It's mine.
It was Morris', never mind, okay. I think we've got it. And if we don't, guess what? We're going to see you next two weeks from now, just to finalize it. All right, thank you very much. Sorry, folks, it's 20 to 10, so let's get on to the next discussion, which is a 9 o'clock review discussion.
Sewer comprehensive plan with Kevin Tafferty, our DPDW director. And Will.
Wait, score?
5-1. 5-1 final.
Brandon.
Really?
Thank you, Will.
That's pretty good.
So now we can slow down and we don't have to go home.
That sucks, I lose.
Gentlemen, thank you for coming. This is a discussion we want to have because there are a lot of people who are interested in trying to tie in, who've asked to tie in because the sewer's in front of them and we keep hearing about capacity or lack there is, a little lack thereof. And so this is kind of an important discussion because there's all the stuff that's out there and people saying, "Why can't we have sewer up here?" And, "Why'd you give sewer there?" And so here's the moment, let's, what's the deal?
So first of all, we want to thank our fan club, everybody that stuck around for the, for the discussion. And officially, you know, I'd like to, you know.
It's you, it's not Will.
It's what? It is. I introduced Will. Will is no longer the acting sewer supervisor. He's been officially made the sewer supervisor, so. How many, got a lot of great work down there.
Well deserved.
So, that being said, we updated our standard update that we've been doing to the board for the past few years and Will's going to explain it and go through it.
Good.
Yeah, so we have a sewer summary report that I'm going to be reading through. Going to give a brief overview of the infrastructure, or sewer infrastructure in town. I'm going to talk about capacity, previous, current and future capacity. Talk about some recent repairs at the facility and talk about some inflow and infiltration projects. So the sewer system consists of about 2,946 sewer connections across town. About 32 miles of sewer mains installed throughout the town with 480 sewer manhole covers and frames, nine wastewater pumping stations and one wastewater treatment plant located on the Driftway. Our treatment plant capacity, we are permitted for 1.6 million gallons per day rolling average throughout the year from EPA and NITIS. Our design peak hourly flow, we can push out 4.34 MGD for about an hour only. And our peak daily flow is about 3.33 MGD. The difference between these peak flows and our permitted flows is so that we can handle events like what occurred overnight when we had some rainfall. Just this afternoon, we experienced about 1.6 to 1.8 inches of rainfall. However, that sent our plant into a high flow situation. Over the last 24 hours, we had a peak flow of 4.21 MGD. And over the last 24 hours, an average flow of 3.46 MGD. Currently, as we're speaking, the plant is process, still processing over at 3 million gallons per day for the current rate. Going to talk about some recent repairs at the facility we've undergone.
Let's stop here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
So let's ask some questions on that front. So in other words, recent rain, a lot of I and I going into the system and the system at our, our treatment plant is pumping out practically at maximum, the 4.3 million gallons per day that it's, that it's allowed to or that it's, can it produce more? That's, that's max?
I, we would, we would be unable to pump at a rate higher than 4.34. It's just the speed doesn't exist.
It's just designed to do that.
That's the design, okay.
So Will, when it didn't rain on, whatever day it didn't rain on, probably two weeks ago.
Last Friday, when it was hot and sunny. There you go.
How much did we process that day?
We're looking at about 1.2, 1.25 MGD at that time.
So, wait a minute. 1.25 when it doesn't rain, 4.3 when it does?
4.3 was the peak instantaneous.
3.34, you said.
3.34 has been pretty much the average for the last 24 hours.
So, almost two and a half times more when it rains. So it's just raining into a funnel and going right into our treatment plant.
And, and to be clear, some, some sewer systems are designed such that storm drain water is sent to the sewer plant. That is not the case in our town. We have a sanitary sewer system. None of the storm drains are connected to the sewer system. These are all increased in flows directly from inflow and infiltration. When it rains, when it pools on the streets, it can pool and seep in through loose manhole frames and covers, which thankfully we are in the process of replacing those throughout town. It can also seep through the ground and area, a lot of areas in town have old clay sewer mains. The clay is a material that's been impaired over the years and isn't resistant to any sort of root infiltration and very susceptible to ground shifts or other settling issues.
Can I jump in here, Will, for one second?
Yeah.
You started going there, Tony was asking. So we have a dry, how quick do you see it? So we had, let's say we have a week of not a drop of rain and then we get, you know, a downpour the eighth day. For what, when do you see it? Does it take a day to go through the, and then it depends how dry the ground is, but typically, what's the delay before you see it? You jump.
It, it depends on the event. Things like rainfall. Typically rainfall events below 0.8 inches in a day don't make a substantial or dramatic impact like the one I just described that's going on today. But rainfalls that exceed about 1.16 inches per day lead or can contribute to events similar to this. Once it starts raining at a rate like we saw, it could take anywhere on average from about six to 16 hours, depending on groundwater conditions and whether or not it happens to be high tide when the rain starts.
And if I can jump in, Will. For the past year and a half, we've had extremely high groundwater tables. You know, since we got out of the drought, there's been a lot of rain and our groundwater tables are up significantly higher.
So that's permeating the pipes?
Right, so it's seeping up, getting into the clay pipes and just flowing?
There, there are areas of clay sewer main that for the most part throughout the year stay submerged in either ground or tidal water.
The main, not the feeders to the house, the main and the.
Connections. Correct, yep.
So would those be, it'd have to be some form of a gravity line, right? Because if they were pressurized, they'd be pushing out all over the place, right? So.
Yep, all the, all the clay services I described are all gravity services. The pressurized systems are typically made, the mains at least are made out of HDPE, which is basically a type of plastic, very resilient, lasts a very long time and waterproof throughout. All the service lines that feed into a force system are rubberized and watertight. So areas like the Musquashka Pond sewer expansion that occurred a few years ago, I believe 2006. areas of town where there are force mains like that, when we have a rainfall event, at the pump station that services the Musquashka area, we don't see severe or noticeable increases in flow. Very much the opposite is true for the Sand Hills Pump Station, which has a lot of services along the coast, a lot of very deep services, old services and clay services. The Sand Hills Pump Station at times can pump to, in excess of 2 million gallons per day during like a flooding event. During an average rainfall like this, I would anticipate that that pump station today likely did 1.2 or higher million gallons per day, just as a single pump station.
How long have they had force mains? Off the top of your head, and I won't hold you to it, ten years, twenty years?
I think they've, they've been around a little bit longer than that, but they've become a lot more popular and standardized in the last two decades.
Yeah.
The last decade in particular has seen quite a boom in force main systems, particularly along coastal communities.
All right, so any other questions on at least the plant capa, or the?
Just one other, are any of the other pump stations not down by the water? Like, is there anything in the west end or any other, well, I guess there's nothing out there. What other areas that is kind of upland, and what's the impact of rain on those?
Some of the pump stations away from the coast would include the Herringbrook Pump Station, the First Parish Pump Station located outside of Town Hall here, and I believe that's, that's it for one, oh, and the Country Way Pump Station, which is not near the coast. These three stations don't experience as severe an increase as the pump stations along the coast do. The one along Country Way in Herringbrook does see a moderate increase in flows during rain events, but not a severe one, and that's just due to the large area that those stations happen to serve.
Is Herringbrook on Driftway?
Yep.
That's right.
Yep, located on New Driftway.
Yeah, okay.
And those are newer lines also.
Hmm, Country Way's not that old, that's for sure.
Yeah.
But they do show moderate increases still?
They do, for those areas, we don't suspect that there's any issues with the sewer mains, thankfully, however, it's difficult to pinpoint some leaks, a lot of things could be contributed from hookups to the sewer system like subpumps, roof drains, and other things that shouldn't be connected to the sewer system that happened to be, and those contribute directly to inflows during rain events or basement floods or things like that.
Do we still put the dye in the smoke?
There, we haven't done a smoke test in that area in a while. Typically, we'll start with a CCTV inspection to look for noticeable and severe deficiencies, and then if we can't discover anything with a CCTV inspection, we would do more intensive smoke testing or dye testing, but those can be.
We try to always stay away from the smoke testing, because if somebody's at work and all of a sudden it fills their house with smoke, you know.
Well, that's the smoke, I was gonna say, how do you, if somebody's connecting their subpump inside their home, you can't, the TV's not gonna do, you're on private property.
The smoke test goes back up and comes out the pump and fills the house up with smoke, so.
That's clever. All right, sorry, it's late.
You don't make any friends when you do that, so.
Well, it also, shouldn't be doing it. All right, sorry, go ahead.
To that end, if there are residents that are concerned whether or not they have a subpump connected to the town sewer system, I'd be happy to take the time to explore that issue, to plumbers or drain layers to address that situation. It isn't permitted in our rules to have those connections, and if we do discover them, when we're doing a study, there could be fees associated, but if someone is concerned that they, they're not sure about it, we'd love to explore that and resolve it, and avoid any sort of fees or expensive studies, because these INI studies do come with a cost, they do take time, and often they would like to have a second study afterwards.
Will, while you're on that subject, in Kevin, so if someone wants to tie a subpump into a storm drain, isn't there a permit process they can go through with DPDW?
We'll work with them if they wanna tie it into a catch basin.
Right.
And we'll work with conservation to do that, or we'll help them come up with a solution.
I know, I've done it in the past, right.
We've done it with people in the past, but it's a lot better for everybody else as a town if you tie into our drainage system as opposed to, as opposed to sewer system.
Oh yeah, no, no, I'm saying it, so there is a process, so it's not, yeah, right.
There is a process, we can help people out and see if we can do anything, it doesn't mean we're gonna tie a major subdivision into a.
No, no, right. But rather than have someone discharge in their subpump onto Hathley Road in the winter when it could freeze, you know, you'll work with that individual, see if you can get it tied into a.
Yeah, we did that with probably about twenty-three people this year, and worked on different areas to relocate the water.
Thank you, sorry.
Sorry, Will, go ahead.
That's right. So I'd like to talk about some recent repairs at the facility. We've undergone a pretty major maintenance overhaul, restoring systems that had exceeded their useful life. First thing I wanna talk about is the SCADA upgrades or updates that have been made part of a phase program. Thankfully, the final phase of SCADA replacement at the treatment plant will be completed in fiscal year twenty. This has allowed us to remotely control the plant and equipment within, and has allowed us to respond to high-flow events like this in immediate and very prompt manners, and make very fine-tuned adjustments, which has led to some improved efficiencies across the plant.
That's just the plant only, it doesn't go to the pumping stations, right?
Currently, just the plant, we are currently working with Western and Sampson to make the same sort of upgrades to the Sand Hills Pump Station. Because that station floods so severely, access to it becomes difficult and dangerous, so we're looking to get remote control of all the equipment in that station as well.
Everybody remembers a petrol bomb, don't they?
Absolutely.
I wouldn't be going out there in the middle of the flood and then go three stories underground. It's the place you'd find me.
And special thank you to the fire department for guiding me out there and keeping me safe. The Vector at the plant, it's a combination jet and vacuum cleaning vehicle, has been restored to service and is allowing us to begin catching up on the backlog of cleaning and maintenance projects at the treatment plant pump stations, and allowing us to clean sewer mains in preparation for inspections and pipelining projects.
Does anyone know what a Vector truck is? Pretty cool.
It's just, it's just the big truck that would.
Like a twelve-inch hose, it's like a vacuum, it'll suck up cement blocks, it's great for cleaning catch bases.
I've seen those, they've been around for a long time.
Yeah, yeah, but they're pretty expensive.
I named them when I worked in the fire department, but I won't share it here, it's a little crude.
It's our only piece of mobile equipment, and we're very happy to see it back in service. We're currently undergoing a design and permitting phase to design a new Vector debris storage site at the wastewater treatment plant. Once we have that site built and installed, we'll be able to catch up on the aforementioned backlog at a very fast rate and actually clear that backlog in a couple of years. Moving on, the plant water system has been replaced with a new style of system to prevent the wear and tear issues the old system was subject to. The previous system would break down multiple times a year, and we needed the entire pump to be replaced within a five-year period. The new system is designed such that the suction lines are all plastic and won't corrode anymore. Also, we installed VFDs for electrical efficiency, and made the pumps slightly larger for higher capacity. The sludge feed pumps and grinders for the belt filter press have been replaced, allowing for greater capacity and higher efficiency of pumping to the belt filter press. So far, one set of the pumps and grinders have been installed, with another set remaining to be installed this summer. We've also replaced the, one of our three polymer pumps, which provides a polymer chemical to the belt filter press to allow for better de-watering. The new pump also has a greater capacity and better efficiency from the previous pumps, and the bonus of having a much lower repair cost if and when it ever does break down. Our old pumps were notorious for having very expensive parts.
That also gets more water out of the system, so we have lower rates when we're disposing of the grit, because it's measured on weight, and just getting rid of regular water can be expensive. The more we get out, the better off we are, sorry.
No problem. We've overhauled our UV system by replacing most of the ballast and lamps within, and designing a maintenance program. Twice a year, we like to drain that channel now and clean it out and replace lamps and ballast. As part of a Green Community Grant, we got the transformers for the UV system from that grant opportunity, and we're gonna be replacing them later next month. Two of the three return sludge pumps have been replaced, currently making plans to replace the remaining return pump. Those are pumps that work along with our clarifiers, which were repaired about two years ago. Replaced the mixer motor for the main digester, repaired pumps at the Herringbrook Pump Station, unfortunately, in response to damage caused by grit debris and fat buildup within the wet well, we also cleaned the wet well several times as a result. As I mentioned before, more frequent cleaning of our tanks, wells, and sewer mains needs to be done, and that's why we're gonna be designing and permitting that Vector debris storage site at the wastewater treatment plant. Also, as part of a Green Community Grant, we've replaced the motors for our post-aeration blowers and installed new VFDs for each motor. So that's just a brief run-through of some of the more major repairs at the facility. There's a countless list of other minor repairs and ongoing projects, but just kind of an overview of what's going on.
Will, what is, what is that thing you keep seeing you're building? What is, what is that actually doing? You're saying it's a storage place for de.
Yep, so the Vector vehicle will suck up all the debris, or whatever happens to be in the mains or the tanks, into the debris tank of the Vector, which is about 22,000 gallons of storage.
In what tank? The tanks at the treatment center?
There's a tank on the truck, so it'll suck, so if we went to a wet well, he'd drop the hose it and suck all the grease and grit out, and with that, he would get a certain amount of water, he'd bring it back to the plant and dump it in a pit, and by natural gravity, the water decanter itself, and then you'd just have to dispose of the grit after you gave it time to dry out. And it'd be, it'd be cheaper because it wouldn't be as wet, it'd be a lot drier.
And a wet well is?
A wet well's in the bottom of, I'm sorry, I'm taking up, I'm talking up. In the, in the pits, like if you go in, you've been in Sand Hills, I believe, and you know how you go down the stairs all the way down the bottom?
No, I've never.
Okay.
I was.
So you're talking the pump station?
In the pump station, when the pump station, down the bottom where all the sewage comes in, it's, it's the deep, deep well that sits down the bottom. The liquid gets pumped out and the solids kind of settle at the bottom, and then we routinely.
So you pump that out, and are you talking about that little, that, you, do you just empty that truck on that big flat area on the backside of the, is that, is that what you're talking about? Where it dries out and water goes, and then you scrape it up from there?
Currently, we have a small-sized pit that's partially subgrade, partially two-grade, with some filters and baffles installed within it. It can handle about one debris tank's worth of material, and then because of its location, it's susceptible to groundwater in the area, and doesn't really drain too readily, so it can take anywhere from days to weeks for one debris tank worth to be ready to be sent to BORN for processing.
Okay, and you're building, you're building a new area at the treatment plant to do?
Yep, we're actually gonna be hopefully locating it within that storage zone that you described.
Overflow pits.
Yep. That way, if there's any sort of splashover, it would go into a controlled sanitary zone, and all the water that was being separated from the solids in this area are gonna be sent directly to the headworks or the influent wet well at the treatment plant, so none of this is, is going anywhere that it shouldn't.
Great.
That's good.
So, next up, I'm gonna.
I had a question, so with all these improvements for the plant, and the plant, aside from the INI, is in good shape for capacity, increased capacity?
For increased capacity, there'd be a number of other improvements that would have to be done. If we want, right now, our biggest obstacle for increasing capacity of the treatment plant happens to be our outfall location and restrictions set on us by the EPA and DEP. EPA has expressed that because of the nature of our outfall, we're at low tides, there isn't any other flow in that ditch other than the effluent from our plant, that they've given us a zero dilution factor, and likely would not entertain increasing the amount of volume of waters going to that location. Certainly not without very, very stringent permit parameters that our current plant probably couldn't handle. If, if we asked EPA to increase SADA to MGD, they would probably drop our limits down to a point where we would need to upgrade treatment systems at the plant.
But if you were to increase the outflow, or extend the outflow, then that wouldn't be an issue with the EPA?
Hopefully not, there would be a lengthy permitting phase to obtain a relocated outfall. I think we, when we studied that, we estimated somewhere between 300 and $500,000 for the permitting phase alone, due to it being located in a marsh and proposing to locate it to an ocean. We identified a total cost for relocating our outfall to the ocean, starting at $15 million. We looked at that option as part of a way to solve our copper issues.
That's right, remember the copper. But I'm saying, so, ball parking potentially, if you're able to do that, extend it out there, then that would help potential capacity for the plant, because the plant could, it's, what are we permitted for?
1.6.
1.6, but if we were able to permit, or push it out further, we could increase our permitting amount.
Could we, could we get a permit to do such a thing?
Well, I think the first thing they're gonna come back to us and say, and.
Before you get to INI, I'm just saying, you know, let's just talk about, so the plant's there, the outflow pipe needs to probably be extended, but that would be permitting issue plus a big number, but that's my question, in other words, if we were able to, could we get up to two, or could we do two and a half million gallons per day?
With, with the way the plant is currently designed, I don't think it's feasible beyond about 1.8 MGD to provide reliable treatment to the same standards that we are today. We could, beyond 1.8, achieve that, but it would require some capital investment. Probably to get like, say, to two, it would definitely require somewhere between seven and 12 million dollars capital investment at the treatment plant. We would have to replace a number of pipes that just aren't the right diameter to support anything larger than 1.8 on a regular basis. Particularly if we increase our standard average flow and then experience a severe flooding event, then we could be pushed to very catastrophic areas.
Sorry, that's, okay, I'll let you continue, go ahead.
So we've already talked about capacity a lot, but that was the next topic on the summary. Just to kinda dive into, dive into it deeper, our current rolling average is 1.498 million gallons per day compared to our permitted limit of 1.60 million gallons per day. The highest rolling average for flows occurred at the end of January 2019 at 1.558 MGD, and I'd like to take a moment to talk about why that number in January was so high. It was due largely to a combination of two factors, one being Storm Riley that occurred in March of 2018. We saw some of the highest-ever flows on average for a month during that month last March. I think we averaged about 2.54 throughout the entire month of March last year.
Just for that pump station, or just?
For the wastewater treatment plant.
Remember the ocean every?
Yeah. Double the rolling average at that time for an entire month, just trying to, after receiving the impacts of Storm Riley, spending weeks and weeks trying to recover, we had to put over a million gallons of floodwaters into storage tanks, and it's kind of unfortunate to say, but some of the water from Storm Riley is still in a storage tank at the plant, slowly being drained back into a system at a very slow rate to reduce cost of treating that water. The other factor which drove that number up in January was the incredibly wet fall season that we've had. This year, from the months of September, October, November, and December of 2018, compared to the same months in 2017, we saw flows double, all throughout the fall, just due to rainfall events, groundwater not receding, and all that water entering into our sewer mains that have INI problems. So those two factors, March on one end and the fall on the other end, made January's number very elevated. Something else, I will say, I did reach out to our regulators at DEP and EPA to discuss concerns about that, and found that we are not alone. Thankfully, we're managing those spiked flows and we're staying below our permitted limits and meeting our permit requirements. There are other towns that have been pushed beyond their permitted flow as a result of this wet fall season, so.
When you say January, you're talking January 19?
January, just a couple of months ago, yep.
That's the average for the full year? Is that what, when you say the January 19?
That's a twelve-month rolling average.
So it's from February to January, that's the twelve-month average?
Yep. Gonna talk about some of the planned sewer phases of expansion.
Before you do that, just so you can say it, and if anyone's listening, so we are not over capacity at the plant. Our plant has a rolling average capacity of 1.65 million, right?
1.60.
1.60, and the highest that we've been.
The permitted average.
Yeah.
The highest that we've been in the last one, two, three, four, five, six years is 1.54, and we've been as low as 1.19.
The highest we've been is 1.558 in January of 2019, for a year total, you're correct, the 1.540 is our highest year in particular, but like, targeting one month for the highest overall number, that occurred in January 2019.
So this kind of one anomaly that you just described put us at our highest, and we were still below capacity?
Yes.
Okay.
Barely.
Uncomfortably close to our capacity.
Well, just so people know, people think we're over it, and that we're, you know.
No, no, you're right.
We aren't over it, we're, it's something we've got to address, but it took a freak kind of anomaly to push us to close.
Yep, yeah, it's very important that we maintain below our permitted flow number, that's very much a not-to-exceed number. If we were to exceed it, our regulators could impose administrative consent orders upon us to undergo inflow and infiltration projects, and once you are placed under an administrative consent order, you are ineligible to receive grant funding for the projects you're directed to complete. And thankfully, the state and the government and employees of the town have been very proactive in procuring and securing grants for the sewer division and other divisions in town, and we'd like to continue to enjoy that benefit.
Will, where do they measure the 1.6? Going into the plant or go discharging?
Discharging.
Discharging, okay.
If we get close, send a couple trucks over, we'll haul it out?
No, I just, that water is quite clean, right?
Very clean, very high standards. Solids permitted below 10 parts per million. On average, I think we have about 2 to 4 parts per million in total solids. Fecal coliform levels well below allowed levels, safe to drink... Not, sorry, not to drink, safe to play in or swim in. Our fecal coliform limit is 14 fecal coliforms sampled per 100 milliliter sampled. I believe the beach standard is about 108 last time I checked, so we're a large factor below that. Very low nitrogen levels. We have very stringent nitrogen limits, so we stay below 4 parts per million on nitrogen. And very low copper limits for those organisms small enough to be affected by it. Our copper is limited to 4 parts per billion going out of our plant.
Could you fertilize with that water?
It's a different round of permitting, because we looked into that before, possibly using that water at the two golf courses around there.
That's where I was going with it.
And we ran into...
Before the meter going out. Look at that, where we're...
Right. And one of the things that came up was we would have to make changes to our process with the amount of nitrogen that's in there and what could go in, and it'd be a whole round of testing.
Would it be that difficult, though? I mean, talk about close proximity to the two golf courses.
It is, it's right there. And we spoke about it with DEP, and this was a little before Will's time, he'd get in there, and we spoke to a couple of different engineering firms. And we were looking at permitting and spending well over $100,000 just to get the permits to put the water in there.
That's nothing. I mean, it's a win-win situation.
One thing that would be notably difficult to treat our effluent for, to provide irrigation water for the golf courses, would be the salt content. We experienced very high salt levels in our effluent and throughout the plant. And not to beat a dead horse, but a lot of that salt comes from tidal and floodwaters entering the sewer mains.
Maybe if we fix that, that's something we could revisit down the road, for sure.
It would certainly make it much more feasible.
Right.
That's my idea. I remember that was your idea.
You're getting to the phases.
So the town has a phased sewer expansion plan, of which three phases are complete and three phases are remaining. Phase four is referred to as the Tree Streets area of town, has an expected flow contribution of 0.14 MGD. Phase five is the North Situate area of town with an expected flow volume of about 0.15 MGD. And phase six is the Minut Beach area section of town with a proposed flow total of 0.13 MGD. These three remaining phases have a total of 0.42 MGD, and we'd like to position the plant through INI projects to be able to begin at least one of those sewer expansion phases.
Will, are those phase numbers current? Or are they from the original engineering plan that was done a gazillion years ago? So how do you ensure that those are accurate?
Phase four would probably need to undergo another study to refine the numbers. However, phases five and six have been part of the regional sewer plan that we've been exploring with Cohasset and Hull. Thankfully, the regional plan will provide enough capacity both for phases five and six, as well as a few other areas of town. Quite a large area of town could be sewered through this regional program.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Will, where was phase... I didn't hear it. Where was phase 2, what area of town?
Tree Streets.
Okay, just one second. Thank you.
Are you going to get to the current average yearly flow rates?
That's provided in a chart table. I think you've probably heard enough numbers from me, so you can refer to the table.
Well, the reason why I want to make sure, so people understand what the rates were in 2014. So in 2014, the average flow rate for that year was 1.305 million gallons per day. So when you begin to take a look at the next phase that we were talking about, whether it's the Tree Streets or whether it was North Situate, you could have brought at least one of them on. And then 2015, it went to 1.194, so it dropped million gallons per day, the average. So in 2015, we were really positioned to maybe potentially bring on maybe not only one, but maybe if we were talking about two phases, in conjunction with some money with INI. And then 2016, it went up to 1.203 million gallons per day. So there was, again, some kind of movement back up, but not like it was in 2014. And then 2017, it jumped to 1.327. And then 2018, 1.54. And so when people begin to say, "Well, you know, we were looking at trying to expand", we were, because we thought we had the capacity to do it, and now we're finding in 2018, it went to 1.54. So I'm like, the problem is the water that's coming into the system is really preventing us from trying to expand these phases. So I just want to put that out there, because there's a lot of misinformation, potentially disinformation, that people seem to think that we're ignoring numbers or that the numbers are playing or we're fooling around with the numbers, strictly on the flow that you're getting at the plant and that we're capped at 1.6 million gallons per day.
Yep.
And so that's why I want to at least raise that, because I think it's important that people, at least here, here the numbers are better yet. You know what? We should publish, if it hasn't been published, your analysis or your memo, so that people can take a look at it for themselves and then decide whether I'm accurately telling these numbers.
Has anyone done it? And I know this is a massive thing to try to figure out, but in that timeframe between 2014 and 2018 and this increase, do we have even anecdotally or maybe through the planning department, is there any way to analyze how much of that is due to new development versus infiltration? I mean, we should be able to say 200 new houses were built in that timeframe, and that translates roughly into X number of gallons. I'd be really curious to see...
Yeah, some of that increase.
I don't think that the impact will be that much.
Right.
But it would be a good thing to kind of pull out and say, and really wrap our heads around?
Yeah, I could talk to Brad about that and see how many houses went online.
I mean, that'd be pretty easy. 110 gallons per bedroom.
Right.
Well, then you have a better idea how much of it really is attributable to INI.
INI.
Oh, yeah.
I would imagine that you would... You do have that. I mean, wouldn't the engineering guys that are doing Cedar Point pull all that?
I would say that an interesting data point to compare, when comparing the numbers just requested, would also be to take a look at average groundwater levels in comparison to new homes constructed. There are a number of developments going on across town, and among the largest of them, they have yet to connect or provide any sewer use yet.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
So they...
We haven't talked about Toll Brothers. We haven't talked about the MBTA parking lot, and the only one that potentially is partially connected are the apartments down on 50 Country Way.
And we, if I remember correctly, we approved Toll Brothers back when the numbers were 1.2.
It was 1.1.
Yeah.
No, it was 2015.
Because Kevin, I remember you coming in saying, "No, you've got capacity, you've got capacity." And then we were all kind of shocked two years later when we were at capacity.
Right.
We're very vulnerable to weather fluctuations.
Yes. And storms. I mean, storms kill us.
Right.
All right.
Speaks to the infiltration, not development.
Now to the INI. Is that where you're going next?
That is, yep. I think we've been there a little bit already, but to continue on, coastal flooding is among some of the most severe influon-infiltration that we see at the plant. Thankfully, a number of improvements have been made to try to mitigate coastal flooding effects. The seawalls along Oceanside Drive have been repaired and raised. During the winter months, we still continue to experience heavy flooding in the Sand Hills area. Whenever it floods, it has a direct impact on our flows. Sometimes anecdotally, residents even think of the Sand Hills pump station as like a drain for the neighborhood. Unfortunately, until those high tides stop coming over the seawall, there isn't much we can do to remove that water from the location.
But you do, actually, when it's done, and you open up literally the gate, the door, it really drains a lot of that basin out.
Yep. And the drainage improvements made in the Oceanside area have also helped a lot. Once that seawater gets below the drain outlet for that area, it leaves very quickly, which is very nice to see now, instead of it staying for days after.
So Will's talking about, we changed, it used to be the old-fashioned flapper valve there.
Yeah.
And we changed it, what's called an elephant trunk. So it's a large rubber piece that only opens up when the flows are going out, and when the tide comes back in, it clamps down and shuts down automatically. So instead of the old flapper, which used to get stuck because rocks would come in or rocks would move in.
I was going to say, debris would get in.
And it would get stuck, and we've even had like furniture stuck, you know, that comes through there that somehow gets down the storm drains. But this new section we built, we built a manhole ahead of it with a deep sum, and then another man... A second manhole so that we could keep it clean. And then we have this, what we call the elephant trunk, and it allows water out, but it doesn't allow anything, and it's a big, thick rubber unit. So far, we've had good luck with it. Anthony's favorite.
So four areas along the coast that experience flooding where there's sewer service, we need to continue to address that issue by continuing to raise, repair seawalls, repair or install new drainage systems, replacing gravity sewer services with low-pressure force systems, replacing manhole frames and covers that are no longer watertight with watertight frames and covers. Very excited to say that we have a number of covers already procured and are in the process of replacing some across town.
That's great.
We've gone through and conducted a few sewer main inspections. There are areas on Ermine, Hathley, Fifth, and Sixth Ave that have been inspected for INI where deficiencies and leaks were found. We're currently soliciting quotes to repair and reline these areas. Repairs should be taking place early this... Within the next month or by July at the latest. Like I said, we're undergoing a sewer manhole replacement program. About 48 watertight frames and covers have already been procured or in the placement process of replacing them across town. About a dozen of them had been replaced already, with another dozen identified to be replaced. And lastly, the Cedar Point sewer main replacement project. We've identified Cedar Point as among the highest influon-infiltration areas in town. It is estimated that about 0.04 million gallons per day enter the system with a daily average from this area. This old deep clay gravity sewer will be replaced with a pressurized system that will minimize INI in this area. This project is currently out to bid. Already mentioned...
So can we...
Go ahead.
Hey, Matt. That doesn't seem... So that doesn't seem like a lot of INI, .04. You know, I know this has been identified as one of our worst sections, but when you look at how much is coming in up top, you know, like 200, right? .2, right?
Or up to over 400,000 gallons annually on average from influon-infiltration.
So this is, what, 40,000?
40,000 gallons a day. In normal circumstances, in flood events, it's significantly higher.
And how much do we think's coming in up, you know, on point number three, where you're looking at Ermine, Hathley, and all that? Do we have, you know, those leaks? What...
We did find deficiencies in that area. We didn't study the severity of those leaks because the area was so small, we decided to just reline and repair them because it was within our budget to do that. Or hopefully, once we get the quotes back, we'll find it will be within our budget to do that.
But reline?
I would estimate...
I'm sorry, more relining of pipes? We're not going to do that anymore, are we?
On Ermine, Hathley, Fifth, and Sixth, it's looking like relining will probably be the best. It's a small section with like some roots that have grown in, a couple caps that have been busted. It's not very severe. I'd estimate maybe 2, 3,000 gallons per day coming in from the deficiencies we found.
Is that very effective? I mean, I've seen it, or not really seen it, but another board one was done before, and I'm just not convinced that that's effective.
No, but it's death by 1,000 paper cuts, as I like to say, with the influon-infiltration. If we could eliminate 2,000 gallons, anything we eliminate is a positive. You know, it does work.
All right. I'd like to see it done, if you don't mind. All right.
And this is a smaller project, so we're looking at it, again, there's, you know, it's something we can...
Back to Morris' question, do you consider that a big amount for Cedar Point?
It's 10%.
10% what?
Of our INI, right?
Yep. For...
You think that's the single largest area in town?
That's what our study report provided to us. In addition to that, it was also the highest rate of INI per lateral foot of sewer. So it had the greatest cost benefit to target that area first.
So tell me how that's that percent? So it's 40,000 gallons a day is what they're treating? You're treating from that area?
Yep.
Some of it's real?
Well, no, Tony, as they told us, you got this figure in the middle of the night when they weren't... How many people are up in the middle of the night flushing toilets and taking showers? That's how I...
So this is all INI?
That 40,000 is all influon-infiltration.
And you said that was what percent?
10. 10% of the total.
10%?
Of overall system-wide influon-infiltration.
Because if the total's 400,000, I just said 10%.
400,000 gallons a day?
If you're looking at 400, are we 400,000 or 450,000? If that's going to remove 40,000, it's 9% then, or, you know, somewhere in there.
Yep. So on a non-rain event, that's what we think is a...
And as part of that study, there were times when that had gone up to 185,000 gallons after, you know, tidal events or to that effect.
So the 40,000 gallons is an average, taking into account a rain event, a low-tide cycle, a high-tide cycle, and a slack-tide cycle.
Who did that study for us? Ty and Bond or was it...
Yeah, Professor McKee.
Right. So I mean, I've been going around telling people that that's a fact, so I certainly hope. And no, seriously, I've been telling people that that's a fact.
I can give you the sheet, copy of the sheet.
As long as it's right, I, you know, I'm happy. It's... All right, okay.
Yep, we do have a complete report from CDM Smith. It's about 62 pages, about 40 of which are graphs and charts and flow metering and the rest of its conclusions and price estimates and flow estimates. Any other questions about Cedar Point before I...
Well, what do you think the second most is? If that's...
Likely the Oceanside area, but there are some unique challenges to that area. There is a sewer main interceptor on Oceanside proper, which carries flows not only from that neighborhood, but all the flows from the Chain Pond Pump Station and all the flows from the Vyskoshka Pond Pump Station passes through that interceptor. Roughly about 60 to 68% of the town sewage passes through the Sand Hills Pump Station and that interceptor. That being a large concrete gravity interceptor, there are a lot of challenges when it comes to replacing that with a low-pressure force main. So it's probably going to take us a while to design and figure out the best plan for the Oceanside area.
Is that 42-inch?
Yeah.
It's huge. It's a big 42-inch pipe. It's a, you know, huge.
That's on Oceanside.
On Oceanside, yeah.
And you believe that that's possibly, or you know that based on your numbers, the flow? That it tends to be the second-largest area for INI, you believe? That vicinity, somewhere in there?
Yep. About 50% of Oceanside was sectioned off in an area of the study and identified to be priority two of the worst... Of the most severe influon-infiltration areas, priority one being Cedar Point.
And Kevin, when are they going to start that construction? Oceanside?
Oceanside Drive, the water should be starting up in about four weeks.
So we'll do the sewer at the same time?
No, we won't. We will not be doing the sewer. We were doing the water lines.
And then just a temporary patch? Because at some point...
A temporary patch, and we'd have to do an evaluation if... I mean, that might be the type of scenario that because of the pipe size, that you might do a bypass, a giant bypass, and do it in the summer in the driest months and actually physically go in and do repairs. That would be a whole different study.
On the sewer?
Pipe, it's 48-inch diameter, so it's a significant pipe.
Right.
You know, I don't think that's something we would be ripping up and putting in a new pipe. My gut feeling, we have four different high pri... We have four or five different high-priority areas.
Okay.
And we went with the... When we chose this originally, we went with the lowest hanging fruit. fruit.
Right, right. I was down that road the other day. There isn't a smooth spot on Oceanside Drive.
Wait till, wait till one of the neighbors who's playing about the road finds out.
Well, I just, yeah, I mean, it's nice and straight. All right, okay, let's move on.
Thankfully, the Cedar Point project includes curb-to-curb paving. That's a bonus.
And with Oceanside Drive, well, we're going to evaluate that after the water lines, and we'll obviously consult Will, which direction we're going with sewer in that area, but I definitely want to pulverize that road and rebuild that road.
Yeah, but not until the sewer's done too.
And make some improvements. And that's how we'd have to look, what we'd do with the sewer.
Right.
I mean, if it's something we could access by manholes, or do some injection, or something like that to control it, you know.
That was installed probably the same time the point in the avenues and the alphabet streets back in the 70s, I think I remember.
Another obstacle with our I and I programs is these larger projects have a high capital cost, and our retained earnings won't allow us to support continued projects like Cedar Point moving on. On the bright side of things-
To support Cedar Point, we already have 2.2 million for Cedar Point.
Yep, projects like Cedar Point.
Okay, I was saying, it doesn't have to say, no, it does.
Thankfully, Cedar Point has been allocated and also is benefiting from a grant from the state. Yep. In brighter news, we've been working with the towns of Cohasset and Hull to explore the feasibility of a regionalized sewer program. The town of Hull is going to make upgrades and repairs to their treatment plant to restore it to service. They have a direct ocean outfall in excess permitted capacity. The engineering study for feasibility of this project will be released, releasing a report to the towns by June of this year. So, we're very excited to see that report and get input from the other towns once that report is published. Like we mentioned earlier, the regional system will provide sewer for North Situate, which we've identified as a high-priority area to provide sewer service to, both for economic and environmental reasons, as well as the minute area, areas in between, and areas up Countryway. These areas also contribute to the Cohasset watershed, and will help clean up those waters, and scores very highly on environmental reports. And we're hoping that the regional system will be eligible to receive a large number of grants because of the impact it'll bring. Lastly, I want to talk about current and potential future development for the sewer system. Roughly 50,000 gallons per day in sewer usage is expected to go online from approved developments in town. With potential future developments, there's an estimated additional 14,000 gallons per day in contribution to the sewer system usage. And again, just wanted to underscore that we have a high inflow and infiltration rate that is limiting our capacity. The I and I in Situate is estimated to be 0.45 million gallons per day, and this is the primary limiter to our capacity and limiter to providing sewer service to new areas of town.
Great job.
Yeah.
It was good.
Thank you.
Well, as, I just have one question. As the new official sewer superintendent, you feel good about these numbers, meaning like accurate, you know, you've been looking at them for, what, a little bit over a year now?
Yep.
So, I guess I think some of our challenges over the years have been just really getting a grasp really where we stand. So, I mean, my intent is not to like put you on the spot, but it's just really to kind of understand, I guess I am. I know, I'm so tired.
Are you lying to us?
I know. That's not really what I'm saying.
I'll translate.
I just want to make sure that these numbers are pretty solid. That's all, you know.
I've been given no-
Poor choice of words.
It's late, it's late. Maury, she needs a Snickers bar.
I will say that a lot of our numbers are based off of the CDM Smith study that was conducted in 2016 and completed in 2017. We have high confidence in these numbers, and that's not just because of that one report, but the town seems to have been studying this issue for a very long time, and a lot of these numbers match closely with previous studies. However, with the notable difference of as time goes by, the numbers have increased and become more severe.
Thank you.
What's the buffer comfort zone that you have? I mean, we're at 1.562, and you, you know, right, is that what, we'll bring our, with the-
If everything-
Additional developments that are in town. So, what's, what's the area where you're like, this is the zone where we just can't, you know, that's our buffer, if you will?
As we were approaching January, just a couple months ago, I was becoming very concerned where our flows were at and where they were heading. Thankfully, that trend didn't continue, because if the trend had continued, we may have been running up against our permitted limit. It had been my hope a couple years ago, by this time, to be pushing for another phase of sewer expansion in order to provide more sewer service and bring more into the plant. However, I can't, and with any good faith, recommend an expansion at this time, because it would push us to exceed our permit, which would have some pretty severe consequences.
So, for that's four phasing. You can't agree to that?
Yeah.
So, the good news is, I assume when we come into summer, our average drops, and every month we get away from that bad month of January, our average drops. So-
That's a notable irony I wanted to mention, actually, that during the summertime, when the number of residents in town increases and the water use in town increases, strangely, the opposite is seen on the sewer end, whereas sewer usage decreases in the summer months despite the increased water use by the residents.
Because it's all ground.
Groundwater table drops.
More table dropping. That's just crazy.
It is.
So-
We need to add more water out of the groundwater and-
What time?
And your numbers that are, these extra 40,000 gallons or whatever per day, that includes the Toll Brothers, right?
Yep, that 50,000 number includes Toll Brothers, 50 Countryway, and a couple other smaller homes.
Okay. So, had we known these numbers back in 2015, we probably would have made a different decision.
Back in 2016, we were trending in the other direction. Like I said, I was hoping that trend would have continued, and we could have done Phase Four or Five, but that trend reversed in a very dramatic way, and now our flows are among the highest that we've seen.
And how many gallons do we think the cycling unit through Cohasset will take out approximately?
It won't take anything out of what we process, but it will-
It'll provide entirely new sewer service.
New area.
No, I know, but, oh, we're not, we're not redirecting it. No.
We're not sending them our junk.
Got it, got it, got it, got it. Okay, okay.
Well, we are sending them our-
We're sending our new junk.
No, but I was thinking that we were going to redirect some, some area, but we're not. We're just going to bring on north.
Could we?
Okay.
But our closest is probably Musquashkett, which is the most efficient.
Right.
Yeah, because it's the new system.
Because it's newer system.
So, we, so we need to maintain the level so that we don't, what did you call it? Administrative, when they-
Consent order.
Consent, because that's the only way that we can still apply for grants to pay for the I and I reduction that we desperately have to do.
Yep.
Okay, and then, okay, I'm just summarizing because my brain stopped working a half an hour ago, but, we've all, so, and one of the reasons that we asked you guys is, somebody slap him.
That's insane.
Is John still here?
I heard it from him.
So, we've had, I think, three or four different individual requests to tie in, which is one of the reasons that we asked you guys to come in, is to say, we all went, timeout, we don't know if we can do this one-offs because we want to know where we are.
That's where we are.
So, what does One House do?
Yeah. One House Title V estimate, conservative estimate for what they could use, would be about 210 gallons per day. I think the average water use in Situate is closer to 95 to 110 gallons per day, average usage per household. So, tell me the number.
So, it's not based on the Title V, 110 per bedroom? It's, it's, you're saying it's-
You use those calculation numbers, but we've been less.
Okay. So, tell me the number again. 100 is a good number to go by?
Roughly 100, 110.
Okay.
Could be a safe assumption.
You said-
No, 210 for a house.
210 for a house. If it's a four-bedroom house, it's 55 gallons per bedroom. So, 110
by, you know, by two, two, you know, 220.
You guys are confused. How much is One House?
220.
220, two, so 200 for a house is a good estimate to, if we add a spaghetti line here or there.
Based on four bedroom.
Okay. Because we also need to generate revenue to pay for your budget, and to do all the stuff we want to do. And pulling new houses on for 16 grand into an infrastructure we already have is the easiest way to make money. So, if you could think about that and tell us what comfortably you, if you thought we could give up 25 units a year or something, houses a year that would add to it without having an impact, that'd be good to know also. Maybe it's 10, maybe it's 5, I don't know, whatever the number is. Because I think we seriously have to think about a program generating revenue by doing that. I don't, you don't have to do it now at 11:00.
One of the things we noticed too, it's cyclic, because as you said, back a couple years ago, we were talking about this, the water was real low, and then we get hit with a drought, and it was even, you know, lower. And now, the weather patterns changed a bit. It's a lot wetter, and our rates have gone up. So, if he said 10 houses in another year, with a reduction in the groundwater table, he could say, yeah, we could take on a lot more. But it just depends how that level drops.
Yeah, I mean, we can only talk about like the upcoming year, you know, and then every year we'll have to reevaluate if that changes.
Yeah. What's, what's most concerning to me is that the revenue for the sewer division is largely dependent on connection fees, and with our capacity, with us coming up to the limit of our permitted capacity, we can't really plan to continue that, because if, like, if we run into that capacity, we're going to suffer consequences for it.
Right. So, rates are going to have to go up, and, you know, smaller increases to existing infrastructure will have to help fund some of the stuff.
Yep. Both ongoing modest I and I projects, somewhere between 200 and $300,000 per year, should be undertaken, and as resources become available, or as grants become available, these larger projects identified in the CDM report need to become priorities for our capital planning for sewer.
Here's, I just don't know. On 40B, if we're at capacity, they don't, they can't, we can't be required to provide sewer, or we can't.
Unless you have a-
Moratorium.
Moratorium.
Even if we're at 97.6% of the capacity?
They get the hookup.
Yep.
Well, that's not good.
Because they can turn around and say, you need, the town needs to do more I and I to remove it, you know, at capacity.
Yeah. Our, our current high flows could be justification for a sewer commissioner-issued moratorium. However, that goes directly to the point I just made about sewer hookup fees largely supporting our revenue and the difficult position we would be in with a moratorium.
So, just one clear, again, we are in that buffer zone that you're not comfortable expanding at this point?
For a phased expansion, definitely not. For modest existing homes, or homes abutting sewer, that's a different story. Homes abutting sewer have a right to connect, and smaller existing properties generally contribute less flow. But substantial projects, projects in excess of a dozen sewer units or more, I would, I would hesitate before approving too many of those.
So, I'm nervous about it.
Yeah, it should be.
Unless they did some sort of corresponding I and I for us, to quote, carve out their own capacity.
That would be the ideal way to position, to position projects at larger than 10 or 12 units, to have some sort of requirement or contribution to address I and I would be a very ideal situation.
Okay.
That's great.
I think that was true, didn't we? The true projects doing their I and I?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I just want to say thank you, Kevin, I know Will in particular. This is the type of explanation that's been extremely helpful for the board, probably more importantly for the public, so they understand exactly the situation. I feel like we go from sewer to water and to seawalls and back again to whatever the crisis is. But in any event, I'd like to, like I said, we should put this on the website so people can have access to it to see exactly the situation, and hopefully, maybe it will improve with the water, but it's really I and I, that's what it comes down to. Any questions from the audience?
Bob, do you want to answer the basic sick relay? I think that's very helpful, and thank you very much. I don't know if Ms. Kentfield's question was answered, but I think it was, that for those situations for communities or houses that have come before the board and made a request, it sounds like that doesn't necessarily fall within the concern of a larger phase. And if that's correct, what would be the next step that we would take having come before the board on about a month ago?
Bob, how many houses was it again?
Well, there's 24 in the development. There's six right along Tilden Road, 18 on Chrisimman and Hickory, and we know that there's, there's 10 of those that would be definite, definitely wanting to hook up.
So, maybe, Will, when you think about it, and tell us what that, what that number of comfortably adding, you know, one-offs, you don't have to do it tonight.
You're impressed. He's ready.
I think we have it scheduled for the May 7 meeting, so maybe-
Yeah, we do. I'll probably need you back there for May 7, Will.
So, come back on, on May 7?
Yeah, we can get in touch with you.
Okay.
Yeah, May 7.
I'll put it earlier on the agenda.
First, we're going to talk about policies. Any other questions? Will, Kevin, thank you very much. I appreciate it for doing this.
Great night. You're here for the 10 o'clock discussion board ADA evaluation transition plan contract for $84,800.
I'll try to present it faster than you said it. The ADA transition plan went out to bid back in September. The bids came in far in excess of what the town had appropriated in a prior capital project in 2017. We went back to town meeting with another capital project for additional funds, and Jim was successful in getting a grant from the Mass Commission on Disabilities for $50,000. We did put it back out to bid before town meeting so that we would be able to make use of the grant before it expired in June 30. We did get our bids back on Monday, yesterday. We had two bidders. One did not comply with the requirements for how to provide his price proposal, which was the preferred proposal. And the second one, which was a very similar firm, could do the work as well, did comply with the price proposal, and we could afford their price proposal, which was $84,800. And this would provide a survey of all the town buildings, parks, and parking lots. And then Phase Two could be awarded after July 1, and that would be for the rights of way. So, looking at the sidewalks.
Did you say all town buildings? All 56 of them, Maron?
Yeah, my list of them all.
Wow.
Doesn't really seem like them.
What do we have set aside for, and what do we estimate?
We have $50,000 already appropriated and a $50,000 grant. So, we have $100,000 that we can spend immediately, and this is $84,800.
Great. Good job.
And they can meet our deadline, which was they need to finish the work by June 30. We put it in the proposal June 19. That's how the contract is written.
I'll say they're done in a month.
Yeah, because we have to spend the grant money, or we lose the grant money. All right.
Questions from the board?
No.
No, I think I do that. Move to award a contract to disability access consultants in the amount of $84,800 for Phase One of the update to the town's ADA evaluation and transition plan.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great.
Thank you.
We are skipping the policy for tonight, but we will address it. If I could only ask everybody to take a look at the proposed revisions that people have submitted, if you have, so that we have it ready to go. Preferably, maybe we can deal with it right off the bat, so we can take care of it at next meeting.
Just a quick note. So, I took the feedback from two of the selectmen that submitted information to me, combined it to the hot topics.
But you didn't, but you didn't edit anything, right?
I did not edit it.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. I read the comments, but I didn't see any changes.
Well, I have the one document that was not edited. I have two documents that were edited by-
Right.
-selectmen.
Yep.
And all three were uncutted.
Yeah.
And then on the executive action page is a summary of what they both identified as sort of hot topics.
Right. I saw that.
The other things are like mine. So, you don't have to discuss the whole thing.
Hot topics.
Got it.
Hot catches, hot topics. All right, good. Next time, next meeting, we'll have that. Let's move on to new business, and we have a, what is it?
One-day win.
Moving Board's luckman approval, one-day wine and malt license for tailor-made bartending for an event at Stewart, Situate Maritime Center on May 4, 2019, from 11 until 3 p.m.
Motion by Mr. Vignali, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that takes care of, that takes care of that. Are there any liaison reports?
No.
No? Saying none? Correspondence? No, saying none. Correspondence? Do we have any correspondence?
Just a couple of things. Jim already mentioned that tomorrow night is the North Situate meeting, public meeting to discuss all things North Situate. It's going to be conducted by the MAPC's coming in to facilitate that. Friends of North Situate and, oh, the same thing, they're inviting everyone to come. It's at six-thirty at the library. The, on the twenty-fifth, which is Thursday night, five-thirty to eight, will be the Citizen of the Year, Business of the Year Awards held at the Mill Wharf honoring Carol Bowman, Dr. Price, and the Mill Wharf, I believe. Oh, no, I'm sorry, CP's pizzas. Correspondence from Living with Coyotes and, living, Living with Coyotes and Wildlife in Situate on Tuesday, April thirtieth, from six to seven-thirty, at the Emergency Operating Center at the Public Safety Building, will be information about coyotes presented by the Mass Fish and Wildlife, as well as the Environmental Police. MassDOT has sent us information concerning their capital investment plan and announced public meeting schedule, the closest of which will be in Braintree on Thursday, May twenty-third, at six-thirty at the Thayer Public Library, if you would like to participate in that conversation. And Plymouth County Commissioner sent us a regional public hearing on issues of women and girls on April twenty-fourth, four-thirty to six-thirty at the Plymouth Public Library, and, yeah, and that we already took care of, and that's it, sir.
You got to read, you got to read, regional public hearing on issues of women. They want to know about issues that affect you, your children, your family, and your community. Why are they doing that, I'm wondering? Plymouth County, county commissioners?
They are a legislative body that affects proposed legislation on women and girls, so they want to be informed before they write legislation, so they need your input.
Since when do they get involved with writing legislation? This is unbelievable.
Okay, we'll have this conversation later.
No, we're not. We'll have it now, because I only have one more meeting on to be able to discuss and bash the Plymouth County Commissioners.
Actually, we're appointing you to the Plymouth County Board.
These guys, this is ridiculous. This is unbelievable.
We'll put it on the agenda for next week.
Another, another waste of taxpayers' dollars.
John, what do you really think?
You can tell in the way it is. You missed, there's the Easter uprising commemoration on Sunday, April twenty-eighth, at noon at the Cole Parkway Bandstand at Situate Harbor.
Do we have to read the proclamation?
And, no, no. And then also, there's a candidate forum sponsored by the Situate Chamber of Commerce. That's actually going to be held on Monday, April twenty-ninth, from seven to nine P.M. at the G.A.R. I'm pretty, I'd be willing to bet it's going to be really a lively debate or discussion if tonight's not any indication. And then finally, I did want to at least raise that there's Pizza Palooza, which is going to be on May seventh, that's Tuesday, from five till six-thirty P.M. at the high school, I think, yeah, right?
It's at the high school.
At the high school, the way it was at the gymnasium, which is, which is awesome.
I love it.
So what I suggest is this, go to that, get filled up, and then come to our selectmen's meeting right afterwards.
I did forget one thing.
There is, there was something I just posted online, that not only do we have the most Irish people per capita, but we also have the most pizza shops per capita.
Yes.
After tonight, so.
I was here for the Italians. I forgot one thing that I promised I would mention. On Saturday, we've got Ship Shape Day in the morning, but also the Gates Steam Present, Steam Spectacular is being held at Gates School, and there's something like two-hundred student exhibits that they've worked on, and last year there were fifteen-hundred people came to it, so it's a really cool, you go to Ship Shape Day, then go over to Gates, and then go get pizza. Not all on the same day.
Well, when is Steam?
Those two, but the pizza's not. You have to go to read this one.
That day, when is, is that, where is all the sign out here?
For the Steam? It's Saturday, yeah.
Oh, it is Saturday, okay.
It is Saturday. There, now I can go to bed, because I-
There's also an art show.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah. Spring for the arts.
That's right.
Nope, no, spring for the arts, but at the Maritime Center on Friday for the middle school and I think high school as well.
They juried. They're a jury. Lots of stuff going on.
And a lot of baseball games.
Yes.
Can we go home?
Anything else? Anybody? All right, how about, I was going to say, let's get to approve the minutes for-
One of those in your pack, they have just a couple of minor changes.
Do you want to move to accept the minutes of April second, two thousand nineteen, and April eighth, two thousand nineteen, border selection meetings?
So move.
Second motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion? Saying none, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, and is that it?
Move to adjourn and sign documents?
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Cantfield. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, folks.